All right. Thanks for everybody being here this afternoon. So, let's go ahead and get this meeting in order. So, move to 2.01, approval of personnel changes and supplement.
You want to call the roll?
Yeah, I am going to call the roll. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Weller?
Here.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks, Mrs. Peterson.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. All right. So, we've got item 2.0 under consent agenda, approval of personnel changes and supplement.
Make a motion to approve.
Yeah. Anything?
No.
Okay. Okay. Perfect. Exactly. Exactly. So, and after we approve it, then you'll load up the documents to board docs, correct? Okay. Good.
One question.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, did you say we had 140 new hires?
I think that was the Dr. McLean's report.
152. And that's just teachers, that's not our first assistants.
Which is high for normal, but we had 27 additional stud teachers through ESAR grant. And we had 11 others. So, that's why it was so high.
Wow. Is that unusual or is it normal?
It is normal, but it's still a massive challenge.
Just for commentary, we, of course, we had orientation for new teachers this past year. Everybody was raving about what a good group it is. So, we're looking forward to having them all in our schools this year. Good group.
Welcome to the meeting, Mike.
What's that? Was I one of those 140?
You might have been.
So, we had a...
Motion to approve item 2.01.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Lyndon? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Item 3.01, we've got recommended policy revisions. Dr. Stahl? How are you?
Hi. We have a policy that in the last batch, we made a revision based on VSBA recommendations, and then realized that's not our current practice. So, what this is, is we're changing it back to our current practice. That's what we've always practiced. We went ahead and made those changes and realized that that's not what we wanted to do. So, basically, there was a mistake. We're correcting that mistake. It's policy 5.3901, support employees grievance procedures. So, we were wanting to take that change back to get our policy back in order.
Okay. Any questions, Dr. Stahl?
I think we do need a vote on this.
No, it's definitely action item. So...
I'm going to accept the report.
Okay. Second. All right. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Lyndon? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Item 3.01, we've got recommended policy revisions. Dr. Stahl? How are you?
Hi. We have a policy that in the last batch, we made a revision based on VSBA recommendations, and then realized that's not our current practice. So, what this is, is we're changing it back to our current practice. That's what we've always practiced. We went ahead and made those changes and realized that that's not what we wanted to do. So, basically, there was a mistake. We're correcting that mistake. It's policy 5.3901, support employees grievance procedures. So, we were wanting to take that change back to get our policy back in order.
Okay. Any questions, Dr. Stahl?
I think we do need a vote on this.
No, it's definitely action item.
I'm going to accept the report.
Okay. Second. All right. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Lyndon? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Item 3.01, we've got recommended policy revisions. Dr. Stahl? How are you?
Hi. We have a policy that in the last batch, we made a revision based on VSBA recommendations, and then realized that's not our current practice. So, what this is, is we're changing it back to our current practice. That's what we've always practiced. We went ahead and made those changes and realized that that's not what we wanted to do. So, basically, there was a mistake. We're correcting that mistake. It's policy 5.3901, support employees grievance procedures. So, we were wanting to take that change back to get our policy back in order.
Okay. Any questions, Dr. Stahl?
I think we do need a vote on this.
No, it's definitely action item.
I'm going to accept the report.
Okay. Second. All right. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Lyndon? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Item 3.01, we've got recommended policy revisions. Dr. Stahl? How are you?
Hi. We have a policy that in the last batch, we made a revision based on VSBA recommendations, and then realized that's not our current practice. So, what this is, is we're changing it back to our current practice. That's what we've always practiced. We went ahead and made those changes and realized that that's not what we wanted to do. So, basically, there was a mistake. We're correcting that mistake. It's policy 5.3901, support employees grievance procedures. So, we were wanting to take that change back to get our policy back in order.
Okay. Any questions, Dr. Stahl?
I think we do need a vote on this.
No, it's definitely action item.
I'm going to accept the report.
Okay. Second. All right. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Lyndon? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Item 3.01, we've got recommended policy revisions. Dr. Stahl? How are you?
Hi. We have a policy that in the last batch, we made a revision based on VSBA recommendations, and then realized that's not our current practice. So, what this is, is we're changing it back to our current practice. That's what we've always practiced. We went ahead and made those changes and realized that that's not what we wanted to do. So, basically, there was a mistake. We're correcting that mistake. It's policy 5.3901, support employees grievance procedures. So, we were wanting to take that change back to get our policy back in order.
Okay. Any questions, Dr. Stahl?
I think we do need a vote on this.
No, it's definitely action item.
I'm going to accept the report.
Okay. Second. All right. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Lyndon? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. All right. So, we've got item 2.0 under consent agenda, approval of personnel changes and supplement.
Make a motion to approve. Item 2?
Yeah. Anything?
No.
Okay. Okay. Perfect. Exactly. Exactly. So, and after we approve it, then you'll load up the documents to board docs, correct? Okay. Good.
One question.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, did you say we had 140 new hires?
I think that was the Dr. McLean's report.
152. And that's just teachers, that's not our first assistants.
Yeah.
Which is high for normal, but we had 27 additional stud teachers through ESAR grant. And we had 11 others. So, that's why it was so high.
Wow. Is that unusual or is it normal?
No, that's very normal. But it's still a massive challenge.
Just for commentary, we, of course, we had orientation for new teachers this past year. And everybody was raving about what a good group it is. So, we're looking forward to having them all in our schools this year. Good group.
Welcome to the meeting, Mike.
What's that? Was I one of those 140?
You might have been.
So, we had a...
Motion to approve item 2.01.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Lyndon? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Item 3.01, we've got recommended policy revisions. Dr. Stahl? How are you?
Hi. We have a policy that in the last batch, we made a revision based on VSBA recommendations, and then realized that's not our current practice. So, what this is, is we're changing it back to our current practice. That's what we've always practiced. We went ahead and made those changes and realized that that's not what we wanted to do. So, basically, there was a mistake. We're correcting that mistake. It's policy 5.3901, support employees grievance procedures. So, we were wanting to take that change back to get our policy back in order.
Okay. Any questions, Dr. Stahl?
I think we do need a vote on this.
No, it's definitely action item.
I'm going to accept the report.
Okay. Second. All right. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Lyndon? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Item 3.01, we've got recommended policy revisions. Dr. Stahl? How are you?
Hi. We have a policy that in the last batch, we made a revision based on VSBA recommendations, and then realized that's not our current practice. So, what this is, is we're changing it back to our current practice. That's what we've always practiced. We went ahead and made those changes and realized that that's not what we wanted to do. So, basically, there was a mistake. We're correcting that mistake. It's policy 5.3901, support employees grievance procedures. So, we were wanting to take that change back to get our policy back in order.
Okay. Any questions, Dr. Stahl?
I think we do need a vote on this.
No, it's definitely action item.
I'm going to accept the report.
Okay. Second. All right. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Lyndon? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Item 3.01, we've got recommended policy revisions. Dr. Stahl? How are you?
Hi. We have a policy that in the last batch, we made a revision based on VSBA recommendations, and then realized that's not our current practice. So, what this is, is we're changing it back to our current practice. That's what we've always practiced. We went ahead and made those changes and realized that that's not what we wanted to do. So, basically, there was a mistake. We're correcting that mistake. It's policy 5.3901, support employees grievance procedures. So, we were wanting to take that change back to get our policy back in order.
Okay. Any questions, Dr. Stahl?
I think we do need a vote on this.
No, it's definitely action item.
I'm going to accept the report.
Okay. Second. All right. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Lyndon? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Item 3.01, we've got recommended policy suggestions. Dr. Stahl? How are you?
Hi. We have a policy that in the last batch, we made a revision based on VSBA recommendations, and then realized that's not our current practice. So, what this is, is we're changing it back to our current practice. That's what we've always practiced. We went ahead and made those changes and realized that that's not what we wanted to do. So, basically, there was a mistake. We're correcting that mistake. It's policy 5.3901, support employees grievance procedures. So, we were wanting to take that change back to get our policy back in order.
Okay. Any questions, Dr. Stahl?
I think we do need a vote on this.
No, it's definitely action item.
I'm going to accept the report.
Okay. Second. All right. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Lyndon? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Item 3.01, we've got recommended policy suggestions. Dr. Stahl? How are you?
Hi. We have a policy that in the last batch, we made a revision based on VSBA recommendations, and then realized that's not our current practice. So, what this is, is we're changing it back to our current practice. That's what we've always practiced. We went ahead and made those changes and realized that that's not what we wanted to do. So, basically, there was a mistake. We're correcting that mistake. It's policy 5.3901, support employees grievance procedures. So, we were wanting to take that change back to get our policy back in order.
Okay. Any questions, Dr. Stahl?
I think we do need a vote on this.
No, it's definitely action item.
I'm going to accept the report.
Okay. Second. All right. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Lyndon? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Item 3.01, we've got recommended policy suggestions. Dr. Stahl? How are you?
Hi. We have a policy that in the last batch, we made a revision based on VSBA recommendations, and then realized that's not our current practice. So, what this is, is we're changing it back to our current practice. That's what we've always practiced. We went ahead and made those changes and realized that that's not what we wanted to do. So, basically, there was a mistake. We're correcting that mistake. It's policy 5.3901, support employees grievance procedures. So, we were wanting to take that change back to get our policy back in order.
Okay. Any questions, Dr. Stahl?
I think we do need a vote on this.
No, it's definitely action item.
I'm going to accept the report.
Okay. Second. All right. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Lyndon? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Item 3.01, we've got recommended policy suggestions. Dr. Stahl? How are you?
Hi. We have a policy that in the last batch, we made a revision based on VSBA recommendations, and then realized that's not our current practice. So, what this is, is we're changing it back to our current practice. That's what we've always practiced. We went ahead and made those changes and realized that that's not what we wanted to do. So, basically, there was a mistake. We're correcting that mistake. It's policy 5.3901, support employees grievance procedures. So, we were wanting to take that change back to get our policy back in order.
Okay. Any questions, Dr. Stahl?
I think we do need a vote on this.
No, it's definitely action item.
I'm going to accept the report.
Okay. Second. All right. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Lyndon? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. All right. So, we've got item 2.0 under consent agenda, approval of personnel changes and supplement.
Make a motion to approve. Item 2?
Yeah. Anything?
No.
Okay. Okay. Perfect.
Standard, you know, the hiring season.
Exactly. Exactly. So, and after we approve it, then you'll load up the documents to board docs, correct? Okay. Good.
One question.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, did you say we had 140 new hires?
I think that was the Dr. McLean's report.
152.
Okay.
152. And that's just teachers, that's not our first assistants.
Yeah.
Which is high for normal, but we had 27 additional stud teachers through ESAR grant. And we had 11 others. So, that's why it was so high.
Wow. Is that unusual or is it normal?
No, that's very normal.
But it's still a massive challenge.
Just for commentary, we, of course, we had orientation for new teachers this past year. And everybody was raving about what a good group it is. So, we're looking forward to having them all in our schools this year. Good group.
Welcome to the meeting, Mike.
What's that? Was I one of those 140?
You might have been.
So, we had a...
Motion to approve item 2.01.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Lyndon? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ray?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. All right. Item 3.01, we've got recommended policy revisions. Dr. Stahl? How are you?
Hi. We have a policy that in the last batch, we made a revision based on VSBA recommendations, and then realized that's not our current practice. So, what this is, is we're changing it back to our current practice. That's what we've always practiced. We went ahead and made those changes and realized that that's not what we wanted to do. So, basically, there was a mistake. We're correcting that mistake. It's policy 5.3901, support employees grievance procedures. So, we were wanting to take that change back to get our policy back in order.
Okay. Any questions, Dr. Stahl?
I think we do need a vote on this.
No, it's definitely action item.
I'm going to accept the report.
Okay. Second. All right. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Weller?
Yes.
Mr. Lyndon? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. All right. Thank you. See you back shortly. Item 4.01, we've got COVID-19 funding presentation. Mrs. Peterson, how are you?
Good. How are you?
Great. Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. Let me get this started here. So, I did want to take a few moments to walk through, basically, the COVID-19 funding that we have on the table, and then go through the ARPA, and kind of what we can expect this month. We do have a public hearing on the docket for our first regular word session this meeting. And I wanted to kind of walk through the process of why it's been so long, and we've kind of talked about this all along, and kind of what's going on, and kind of where we are. So, first off, the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act was the first batch of my funds. This is affectionately known as the CARES Act. There were various different pots of funds that came out of the CARES Act. We received 1 point, about 1.9 million, just less than that, from the county of Roanoke. We received about, just under 2.4 million, from the VDOE. Both of these came from the Coronavirus Relief Fund piece, which were related to amounts, if you recall, that had a deadline of December 30th. And we made a big deal because the federal government made a big deal that it had a use-by date of 12/30. We were very diligent in moving funds around and making sure that we spent that by 12/30. And then along came 12/31, and the federal government said, "Oh, we're going to extend this." But we diligently used it by 12/30, and so all of these funds were spent by 12/30. We also then received the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, which we affectionately call the ESAR 1 Grant. A lot of the funds that were in this ESAR 1, we actually moved back into the CRF fund. And so, we've got some shifting around to ensure we use that money appropriately. And so, there is some reconciling that I am doing right now, along with year-end reconciliation accounting that we're taking care of. So, I want to make sure that all of this is easily understandable, and everything's in the right pot, before I provide a detailed report. But I will provide a detailed report in the near future for your review. Shortly thereafter, came the ESAR 1 set-aside funds. This included kind of three little pots of money, a special end piece, a facilities upgrade piece, and a cleaning supplies piece. And then, kind of related, but off to a side, came the vision piece from the Governor's Emergency Relief Fund. Again, pieces of this were transferred from the ESAR 1 as well. Another piece of the CARES Act, the Provider Relief Fund. We had staff that works with the Medicaid program find an opportunity to apply for this Provider Relief Fund based off of our Medicaid filings, and we had an opportunity to obtain additional funding. The second batch of revenue, the 6,391, I do believe we are using that right now to purchase masks for the upcoming school year for our school buses. And so, that is coming in handy right now. As far as the next section on my PowerPoint, the school breakfast, the national lunch program, and the summer program. These monies are not additional funds, kind of like what we've just spoken about. They are really just operating funds that are part of the lunch program. The, as you know, the, our lunch program gets federal money in the first place, just by operating their program. And instead of providing the regular federal program money, the federal government just gave them CARES money. And so, it was just kind of a swap of, instead of giving you our federal program money, like we normally do, we're going to give you CARES program money. So, it was not really any additional. It was just operating money that they got. They just gave it to us under the CARES program.
Did this extend the free lunch, or...
And we made a big deal because the federal government made a big deal that it had a, a use by date of 12/30. Um, we were very diligent in, uh, moving funds around and making sure that we spent that by 12/30. And then along came 12/31, and the federal government said, "Uh, we're gonna extend this." But we diligently used it by 12/30, and so all of those funds were spent by 12/30. We also then received, uh, the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, which we affectionately call the ESER 1, uh, grant. A lot of the funds that were in this ESER 1, we actually moved back into the CRF fund. And so we've got some shifting around, uh, to ensure we use that money appropriately. And so, there is some reconciling that I am doing right now, along with your end, uh, reconciliation accounting that we're taking care of. So I want to make sure that all of this is, um, easily understandable and everything's in the right pot, uh, before I provide a detailed report, but I will provide a detailed report in the near future for your review. Shortly thereafter came the ESER 1 set aside funds. This included kind of three little pots of money, a special ed piece, a facilities upgrade piece, and a cleaning supplies piece. And then, kind of related but off to a side, came the vision, uh, piece from the Governor's Emergency Relief Fund. Again, pieces of this were transferred from the ESER 1 as well. Another piece of the CARES Act, uh, the Provider Relief Fund. We had staff that works with the Medicaid program, um, find an opportunity to apply for this Provider Relief Fund based off of our Medicaid filings, and, um, we had an opportunity to obtain additional funding. Um, the second batch of revenue, the 6,391, I do believe we are using that right now to purchase masks, uh, for the upcoming, the upcoming school year for our school buses. And so that is coming in handy right now. As far as the next, uh, section on my PowerPoint, the school breakfast, the national lunch program, and the summer, uh, program. These monies are not additional funds, kind of like what we've just spoken about. They are really just operating funds that are part of the lunch program. Um, the, as you know, the, the, our lunch program gets federal money in the first place, just by operating their program. And instead of providing the regular federal program money, the federal government just gave them CARES money. And so it was just kind of a swap of, instead of giving you our federal program money, like we normally do, we're gonna give you CARES program money. Um, so it was not really, uh, in any additional, it was just operating money that they got. They just gave it to us under the CARES program.
Did this extend the, uh, free lunch, or?
They did extend the, the free lunch program through the current school year.
Through this current school year?
Mm-hmm, so every student will eat free, uh, through the end of the current school year. So basically, everything on the screen right now, um, relate to funding through the end of the 6, um, 30, 21 school year, um, and funds that are mostly appropriated and spent.
Susan, when you look at the, um, ESER 1 set aside for facilities upgrade, is that additional money or is that supplanted money?
Uh, those were additional funds.
Additional funds, and were there strings attached to what we can use that for?
N- no, there were no strings attached.
Well, it had to be COVID-related, didn't it, or not, like HVAC kind of thing?
There were, there were HVAC related, there were two HVAC programs related in, projects included in that.
Thank you.
So then our next slide, um, we had a supplemental appropriation from the coronavirus, coronavirus response and relief appropriation. Um, so that includes the ESER 2 funds of 4.3. Uh, we did take a, a request for an ordinance in, um, April to the Board of Supervisors, uh, for 4.3 million, and we are reconciling, uh, the amounts that we took in for that. Um, and near the e- end of the year, we requested, um, additional amounts for summer programming, um, to extend out what we offered this summer for the next two years. Um, if you recall in the past, I had, uh, let you know that we had asked for greater than a million dollars, and we were awarded 979 under the Unfinished Learning, um, ESER 2 add-on grant. And so that's the amount under the appropriations that we are looking at having available for us. So that's the appropriation amount that was allowed in December of 20, 27, 2020. And then with the American Rescue Plan Act that came to be in March of 2021, we've got the large 9.7 million, this amount was, um, added to our budget. However, it was not appropriated, uh, by the Board of Supervisors, um, because, and that was probably a good thing because we do have a lot more work to, um, go through to look at how we're gonna spend it. Um, and, and we need to, I'll go over that in the next slide. And then we were made aware just recently that, uh, we have some additional special education money through their, their 611 and, and their 619, uh, preschool grants, um, that we are working through logistics of how to purposefully use those funds as well. On a side, in 2020, we, um, right when all of this happened, we had PP&amp;E that we, uh, went ahead and asked for some funding from FEMA and were approved. So, that's the teeny amount of 11,000 that we received back. So, um, in total, uh, 22.9, um, right now is the amount of funding that we are aware of, related to the COVID-19, that has either been already, um, awarded to us or we know is on the table and they're proxy amounts that will be awarded to us.
The 611, it's called the 611 funds, that around 683, you, you said that was designated for pre-K?
Uh, the 611 is just special ed, and the 619 is the pre-K amount.
Oh, okay, so 49 for pre-K, okay, I was getting excited there for 83 for pre-K. Um, okay, is, the strings attached with that? I mean, as far as the, the pre-K, is that to help with learning loss? Is it, you know, I mean, that, that's obviously not enough money really to expand the pre-K program. I mean, um, so, will we just use it to enhance existing learning, Dr. Nicely? I mean.
That, uh, that's something that, uh, you know, staff is working on as far as developing the plans for that section.
Okay.
Is what, we'd be bringing back additional information. I know, uh, you know, Ms. Harmon, the special ed, has some ideas and, and desires as far as how to use the, the special ed portion that I think will be very advantageous to, so, they'll, they'll be bringing that information back.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Greenway?
One quick, uh, question, going back just a little bit, the summer food service program for the meals, the 881, is that money that will, I mean, that's a one-time piece of money, right?
That, that was actually just refunding meals that we served.
That we've already done? We've already served from this previous summer, or with this summer?
Yeah.
So, but that, so that money wasn't, that wasn't money coming in from the, uh, I see you've got the ESER program up here, but it, it wasn't that how that was spent in some way, the, from the ESER funds? Or no?
That was just the source that the federal government provided that, that reimbursement to our program. But it was just normal operating funds from our perspective.
Okay, so we would have spent that in '20?
Um, so in the left-hand column, we, this happened in both, um, fiscal year '20 and in fiscal year '21. So the left-hand column was the amount that we recognized in our financials in fiscal year '20, and then in the right-hand column is what we recognized in fiscal year '21.
And so, what was the, uh, so I guess my question, what, what's the difference in '20 and '21 there?
You, in the dollar amounts?
Yes, yes, because, you know, that's funding that we have to provide in some fashion. So where, what is the difference there from 881 to 114?
It, it's just how the federal government decided to split up their portion. Cause we requested, we just reckon, we just told the federal government we served X amount of meals. And then they took X amount of meals, and they split it up and said, "This amount we're gonna fund through CARES, and this amount we're gonna fund through regular funding."
So at the end of all, all of that, it's money that was provided from federal funding, correct?
Correct.
So my, my question is, did we provide or do anything differently than we would have done in '20? And if we do that going forward in '22, we have to know, alright, so nothing changed?
Not in the future, no.
Okay, that's, that's where I'm going, is, will that be an additional amount we need to know about? Okay.
Nope, not in that.
Cause we've been, I mean, this, is this the third or fourth summer in a row that we've provided free meals over the summertime?
The?
Four.
20.
I think it's third.
The summer feeding program we're talking about?
Yes, 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 sir.
Maybe four, but I think three.
Fourth, the possibly third.
We had two years.
That's been, that's been a while, yeah.
Gotcha. And we've been reimbursed for that every, every time, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So essentially, it sounds like what you're saying is this, the government just chose to reimburse us some of it through CARES and some of it through regu- right, I mean, it's just really accounting, correct?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just out of curiosity, how many meals did we tell them we served? Because, I mean, at $5 a meal, I figured that was 176,200 meals.
Well, what you have to understand is every meal we served to every student this year was, was free and reimbursed.
It was not just summer?
No.
Okay, cause it says summer food, okay.
Yeah, that's.
It was all.
That was the program we served, the news on, yeah.
Okay, that's where it got me, yep.
Gotcha.
So that may be, that may be, yeah, so that may be one of the differences that you're looking at is they may have requested the reimbursement to jump that number up higher because they served all year long underneath that program, as opposed to just the summer underneath that program.
I got you, so where we provide it, so that's, that's, there you go.
That's.
So the summer of '20 was 114,000 dollars. The year of '21 was 800, what, 81 or whatever?
Sorry.
Okay, there you go, thank you.
That makes more sense.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, I was not.
Thank you, no, it's okay, yep, I just wanted to, I just thought maybe that was something additional we did that we're gonna, that's gonna go away for next year, but, yeah, it's just the way they proposed, I got you.
Alright, um, so the reason why it's kind of taken so long to get to this point and this planning stage, with the, um, ARPA money, there are different planning requirements, uh, that we do need to meet, and we have to, to prove that we're meeting them. Um, one thing that, that they have put in place is that we do have to prove that we are engaging in meaningful consultation, and we have to seek input from the public of how we are going to use the funds. We are going to do this by having a public hearing on August 12th. We advertised it last Sunday, we're gonna advertise it this upcoming Sunday. So that will meet our advertising requirements for having a public hearing. That is the same thing that we do for our budgeting process, so that kind of follows our budgeting process. Um, the other way we're gonna seek input from our parents specifically is, um, Mr. Lumberger has set up a parent advisory council meeting on, uh, August 16th, and I will have a presentation with them and seek input from our parents at that time. And they can feel free to, um, join that webinar and share any, um, suggestions, comments, thoughts of how they think their students, uh, the school division could use the funds, uh, to help out the students going forward. We have an employee advisory committee meeting that's been scheduled for August 23rd, so that our employees could then, at all of the schools, share with their representative how they think their school, their teachers, their IAs, their staff could benefit by the use of these funds. And again, principals, the following day, will have a meeting and be able to share their comments and their input. So these are kind of our biggest stakeholders, um, that we serve for the, for students, that are champions of our students, and so that's how we're gonna get our meaningful consultation and input. So I really wanted to lay out this plan and come up with a good way to get this input. Um, another requirement is 20%, which of the amount will be 1.9 million, does have to be set aside to address learning loss through the implementation of evidence-based interventions. And so our, um, instructional team are looking into what, what they, um, can do to identify and implement these, uh, robust systems. Uh, we do have to publish the plan on the website, so this is different. This is different than me coming in here and, you know, publishing dollars on a screen in a report. I do that all day long, I do that every, all the time, and I give it to you, and we, we, we take it to the school and we say, "For PP&amp;E, we're gonna spend this for," it's very much different than that. It's basically taking the application and, and defining in words and how it's gonna be used. So it's a little bit different than what we're used to. We also have a maintenance of equity, uh, compliance that we're gonna have to meet for this ARPA funding, which is a little bit different than what we're used to as well. Currently, we have a maintenance of effort requirement for our IDEA and our ESEA federal government requirements. Um, but this is for these two years, and it's for high poverty schools, and these are not necessarily going to be our Title I schools. These are gonna be a different group of schools, and it's gonna be based on a calculator tool that VDOE is going to give us, and, um, we're, we're, we're waiting on that, that hasn't been published, uh, yet. Um, that information is forthcoming, and it's gonna have two different criteria. Not only is it gonna be based on the funding per school, but it will also be based on the FTE and the staffing at that school. And so, that's the piece that we've not had to necessarily track and look at in the past. We've always had to look at the funding, but not necessarily the FTEs. Um, so that's something, and if you think about it, for FY '22, that's already started because we've already staffed FY '22. Uh, Mr. Bradshaw has staffed that last March because our teachers are, and are starting to come into our buildings tomorrow. So, we're kind of past the stage of making sure we staff that.
Mr. Weber?
Mr. Chairman, um, Susan, um, you mentioned that, you know, Title I schools, we have traditionally thought of those as underserved, uh, in terms of equity readiness, that type of thing. That's why they're Title I. You're saying that Title I schools may or may not be in that mix? Or is, would you see additional schools who are not Title I, but we know have high pockets of poverty? You know, that could also qualify?
It, it, it could be because when I've taken some, um, training on this, they were really defining this as being outside of the bounds of Roanoke County. And so it could be that we're looking at, you know, poverty levels that are not within just Roanoke County, but, you know, comparable to other locations.
So what you're saying is that if they look at it regionally, the poverty level might be lower than what we use for Title I? Which would, I would think, qualify some more of our schools that we're having trouble with. Oh, I'm sorry, s- some of our schools that we're having trouble with now, you know, not being included in Title I because of funding restraints.
It could be, it could be, so we may have more schools that we need to watch for this maintenance of equity?
Right.
We may have different schools?
So there's, so this formula has not, this formula has not come out yet, correct?
Correct.
Alright, uh, when it does, I mean, is a lot of this information pre-populated for you? Or are y'all gonna have to do a lot of your department, I mean, are you gonna have to essentially do a lot of research, data input, things of that nature?
I, I don't know yet. I, I'm just saying, I know it's out there, and I know it's something we're gonna have to comply with. Um, and I know it's a big deal.
Now, a- and, and once again, we're, you know, the funds we're talking about is the American Rescue Plan Act, right? The, the ESER 3 funds, that 97, 9.7 million. Is there, I mean, do we know, is there a percentage that needs to spend that has to be? We know there's a certain, the 20% that needs to be spent, if you, can you roll back to that, uh, the next slide? Please, Susan? Yeah, so we know 20% of that, as you calculated. Is there a percentage that needs to be focused on the maintenance of equity? Do we know that yet, or?
So my understanding with the maintenance of equity is all the schools that meet that poverty level, for all of those schools, we must spend, we must meet the per people spending and the FTE amount at the, the poverty schools that we spend in the other schools in the school division, period.
Okay.
So, like, we can't spend less at any of them.
Okay.
So, that's.
Okay, Mr. Ray?
Yeah, Susan, uh, does it, I guess, percentage-wise, you're saying it's not just the Title I? It could be another, would it be a pocket that they would pick in a certain percent? Or would it have, you don't know yet? But I, you know, I'm just trying to figure out if it's gonna be a certain percentage of the school population, or is it just gonna be, I mean, would we be, well, you don't know that either.
When, when will you have that, I think, will you have an idea?
There is a training on Thursday, so we'll have a better idea of what's coming down the pipe on Thursday.
Maybe we would know by next board meeting?
Hopefully we'll have much better information.
Some idea. Cause that's pretty important, obviously.
It is.
Will there be guidelines on suggestions, you know, we know that the learning loss aspect of it, um, you know, but as far as guidelines on how that money needs to be spent? I mean, if we're, you know, specifically when we're talking about maintenance of equity, um, I mean, you know, if we have a school that we need to spend X amount of dollars, I mean, I'm sure we just can't upgrade the HVAC system there, right? I mean, does it have to be related to, to learning? You know, does it?
They, they don't provide, they don't say.
Okay, alright.
So I mean, I guess you could put in the HVAC there, right, I mean.
I'm not saying we should, I'm, I mean, I'm just trying to see what some of these guidelines are.
But the guidelines are very open with the ARPA.
Okay.
They're not very, of the, the three pots of money, the guidelines with ARPA outside of the 20% are the most flexible. outside of the 20% are the most flexible.
Okay.
Susan, this is a different way of looking at funding when you look at outside of Roanoke County. So in this case, would the funds necessarily flow to the school? Or would the, would the funds flow to the school where the students are located? Do you see my difference? Do you have to have a certain percentage in a school to receive money? Or could more schools be receiving money based on the percentage or the number of people that they have that meet the criteria for the poverty line? Does it, does the money go, does the money follow where the school or the student attends? Or does it go to the division and you guys split it up there?
Well, it comes to the division and then where we spend it is where we would test for the maintenance of equity.
Part's been identified, I guess.
Next steps are going to be, you know, getting the inputs, identifying what the needs are, and then making sure that whatever needs we prioritize and identify meet our needs, but also meet those requirements. That's, that's going to be sort of the.
As far as the employee advisory committee is, is concerned, you know, can we make sure that they have ample time, you know, since we have, you know, one representative per school, right? You know, when we're talking about specifically the learning loss. I mean, you know, as you've suggested and are putting together and, you know, engaging, you know, the stakeholders, you know, teachers, parents. I just want to make sure that the EAC rep have plenty of time to talk to the teachers in their building to get their input as well, so that they can bring that information, you know, to the EAC committee.
We can either send information out early to allow them to share staff or send them information and give it a timeline to talk.
Yeah. I mean, I think the more time they have to, you know, I mean, this is a busy time for our teachers, you know, in the first couple of weeks of school. So I want to make sure they have ample time to talk to their colleagues.
And they'll be working with the principals as well to try to prioritize and all that as well.
Thank you.
And, and that's an excellent suggestion. And some of these groups, like the parent advisory or parent advisory in particular, you know, may not have enough background. You know, we can give them some, some ideas about how we've tried to be equitable in the past and where we see deficiencies so that they can help us prioritize that.
Absolutely.
And, and it is my hope to to go ahead and get the website updated and get the reconciliations on the website, website as quickly as possible. So they can see kind of where we've spent funds already. It's my hope to do it as quickly as possible.
Will the public hearing input be a portion, a part of our meeting that evening? Is that the plan? Or is there a separate meeting for that? We have a school board meeting that night?
It's part of the school board meeting.
Something tells me it won't be the topic of conversation that night.
And so the 20% is, that's the guidelines being passed down that we use?
That is a, the 20% is a requirement.
Right. That's, yeah, that's.
I'd, I'd call that a minimum requirement.
Right. Yeah, because I could see, I mean, we're going to run into a boatload of issues, I believe. You know, as we move forward.
And it was interesting because some of the training that I took, and, and one thing you've got to think about is the training that I took was nationwide. And so some of the, you know, I, I was talking with directors from California all the way to Maine, right? And so some of these people haven't even had schools open. So some of them were putting their funds towards, you know, like these Kaplan institutes to send students to tutors to provide some supplements that way. So it was just like a wide, just a big wide variety of these pieces of funding. I'm not suggesting that. I just, that was kind of a shock. Like, I would not have expected that.
I'm sure all suggestions will be on the table. And I think the timeline, I think it's a good timeline, you know, by the time we, you know, finish up with the principals', you know, meeting. You know, we'll have kids in school almost two weeks. I mean, we're not going to know immediately the, the level of loss. And that's going to take, you know, it'll take a little bit of time, but it's nice to know that they'll, you know, that there's a pot of money that we can use towards, whether it's remediation, whatever it may be. So, okay.
Actually, then we, we are planning on providing a presentation at the, the next board meeting that week to you guys of kind of the final, this is what we, the culmination of all of these meetings. And then we'll submit the application on September 1st.
Got you. All right. Any other questions?
I will kind of follow up and let you know that. So there may be additional funding coming down the pipe from all of this. I don't even know if I want to even open my mouth. But the general assembly, there were some presentations yesterday. I think you guys usually like watch all of that. So y'all probably have already seen some of this. Sorry, I'm sitting back and I shouldn't be. But there was some discussion about some direct funding for HVAC projects to schools, so some additional amounts. So I'm thinking we may get, you know, at a minimum $200,000 because that was the minimum that was on both sides of the committees that was discussed. So that was an amount. And then there was a teacher recruitment bonus that was being tossed around in both sides that, and this is not even part of this discussion. This is more ARPA money that the state has that they're addressing. So, so my list back at the beginning may add lines for these items. And so that's some additional funding that Jim may have some recruiting funds that he may have available to him in the near future. So there's some additional things that may come down the pipe.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Regardless of national debt or anything like that, I'm sure we'll all take the money. And we'll gladly put it to good use.
They're still in session, by the way.
But yes, I don't, that's, I'll shut up.
I was just talking federal. So, okay. Move on to 4.02, capital projects budget transfer request?
All right. So for this one, and I'll, I'll try and stay out of the weeds. So when I brought the William Bird High request, and let me just say this upfront, I am not asking for any change in any project value at all. All I'm asking for is to change the fund the dollars are in. What I did, I brought forth asking for bonds of $22,441,541 to go to William Bird High. So when I got the VPSA bond application and I started reading through it, the VPSA bond application, which this is the first time I've ever looked at one of those, was very specific that you can only apply for bonds in even increments of $5,000. Well, that wasn't going to work. So to round that off, we can only apply for $22,440,000 of VPSA bonds.
Fifteen forty-one difference.
So what I would like to do.
We just won't put Tim's name on the plaque.
The fact that we would have a plaque is overspending.
And so what I would like to do is just pull the $1,541 out of the bond fund, put it in major capital fund. And while I'm at it, since I also see that the Glengrove and W kind of projects, bonds are not even just even those out with the cash. And so in doing that, that'll just allow me to, in the books, make the transfers that I need so that the books are ready for when we actually get the bond money. That's all.
Tim, you didn't want to ask if we could round up instead of down?
I get it. It's bird. I get it. I was going to ask for an additional $1,541 in spending, so I guess we'll let it go.
If, if that's good, then it'll just roll to consent agenda at the board meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, that might be a little, a good segue into your next item, right? Request to participate in the Fall 2021 VPSA Bond Program.
So the time has come. Yay. We get to apply for VPSA bonds and the application came. We have already gone through the resolution to include any purchases made up to the time we get the bonds in the application. And now we just need to get the resolution, requesting the board of supervisors to issue the bonds and we need to complete the application. All of the blank forms are included in the agenda for tonight. And what I would like to do is get the application completed. It's completed with the exception of one little section. And then I'll get that completed for the next meeting and get it on the consent agenda. So I don't know that you necessarily need to really have it on action or anything. The board of supervisors are tentatively planning on approving the resolution for first reading on the 24th. The application is due on the 30th. So then they'll have the, so our part really has to be done by the 30th. And then they can have their second reading on the 21st because their part needs to be done by the 4th. And then we'll be good to go. So that's all we have for you.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it, Susan.
Thank you.
All right. 4.04, we have a COVID update. Dr. Stigall?
One second here. Just trying to pull it up.
Okay, you can go ahead. You, yeah. Thank you. All right. Good afternoon again. So we're going to share with some updated COVID data for you. It's based on information we received today. There we go. Okay, so transmission rate, I always share that information with you every meeting that we've had throughout COVID. Unfortunately, that information is not updated until tomorrow. So we called the health department. Is there any way we can, you know, recalculate this, get our updated numbers? She said, no, that's built into a system. There's a seven-day average that it comes out every Wednesday. So I switched up data just to show you, I think will show you the same thing that that chart shows. Weekly, we get a report from Dr. Morrow and she sends it to all superintendents in the area and shows us case data. So the document we received today, it shows that we were up 371 cases in our health district since last week. So what I did is put in parentheses just to show you the increase. July 13th, we were up 115. July 20th, we were up 196. July 27th, up 230. And today we were up 371. So you can see that we're clearly trending up. In July 24th, during the last presentation I made to you, we were at moderate. We are now at high. So the levels are low, moderate, substantial, and high. So we jumped, if you were watching those numbers, we jumped from moderate to high in one week. So that's a significant increase in one week.
Dr. Skal, can you, for, for the good of the group and anyone out there, can you tell us again the counties that are in our health district?
Yeah, so it's, it's called Allegheny, Roanoke City Health District.
Okay.
And so it includes all the locations from Roanoke County, Roanoke City, Salem, Allegheny, Covington, Bodatot and Craig.
All right. Do we know the actual populate, I mean, you know, I know it's easy and, you know, between Roanoke County, Roanoke City, and Salem, you know, we're, you know, around 200, probably about 220, 225,000 population. You know, then we have Bodatot and these other counties. I mean, you know, what do you think? That pushes us up to 400,000? I mean, so.
I guess I don't think it'd be that much. I don't think it'd be that much.
Maybe two, maybe plus to 300.
300, okay. So, so, yeah. So 371 cases, about 300,000 people, roughly. Okay.
So divide that in your.
Yeah, people who were tested.
Do you remember offhand the percentage on July 21st that we had that pushed us into the high?
We were at.
I'm thinking about 5.9.
Yeah, I thought it was 4.1, I think what it was. A positive test within a seven-day timeframe. And then the very next week, it jumped up to 12 point something. So it was a significant increase in one week's time from, well, from July 21st to last week. And of course, this week, we don't have the numbers yet.
So, so up 371 cases?
In three weeks.
In three weeks.
That's one week. Yeah.
All right, that's in one week. So what is that up from? 371 above what?
Yeah, we have it here. It's the total number. We're at two, what is it? 25,165 cases this week.
No, no. That's total. We're up 371 from the previous.
Oh, yes. So, yeah, that's, that's the total currently.
165 and 371 are the positive cases.
Yes.
This week.
And last week, it was 24,794.
Positive cases in one week or total?
That's the total number.
Total number in the health, in the health district.
Year-to-date?
No, July.
No, I think that's.
I just want to make sure we have the facts.
Yeah, this is important.
If we're up 37, I mean, does that, if we're up 371, does that mean we've, in the last week, we've had 371 new cases?
Right, new cases. From last week to this week.
So out of 300,000, 300,000 people, we've had 371 new cases?
In a one-week period.
Okay.
Right, yeah. But if you do look at the chart, which we can pull up, but if you look at the chart, it, it pretty much mirrors back where we were in April when we were about to close school down at the end of, end of school. Remember, we were in athletic, making decisions, all of those. We're almost at the exact same level we were then now. So you can kind of put that in perspective where we're at now. So we did dip down. We're starting to climb back up and we're in the same place we were back in April.
And are these numbers now actual cases and not presumed cases because of rapid testing being available? Or are some of these numbers going to be presumed cases?
They are, like, she's got it broken down to probable.
She doesn't tell us in the last week, but.
The actual numbers are here. But they, she doesn't tell us, like, the increase from week to week between probable. Like, for example, what is here is out of the 25,165 to date, for example, we have. Yeah, she's got it in two regions. So if you look at the Roanoke City Health District, they have 8,950 total. 7,414 are confirmed and 1,536 are probable. They also have those same numbers for Allegheny. 16,215 total, 12,788 are confirmed and 3,427 probable.
And that's year-to-date?
Yes.
I think the overall numbers are from the beginning of the pandemic.
Yeah.
It's not year.
The 25,100.
So that's going back like to last year.
February.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. Because they're cumulative.
So that, that helps.
We don't have that.
15% are probable. 15% of cases are considered probable. 85% confirmed.
Okay.
A lot of families, if, if everybody's symptomatic, don't test one or two of the family members and not test everybody. They'll presume the rest of you. So they become a probable because they're symptomatic.
Even though they could be vaccinated, they, you presume that if, I'm, I'm just asking. So if, if that person tests positive and he goes back to his family, no matter whether they're vaccinated or unvaccinated, they're presumed.
We are seeing breakthrough cases in vaccinated people.
And so how does that go? I'm, I'm, we're hearing that's not, if you're vaccinated, that's not, and this is getting off topic, but if you're vaccinated, that it's not as big a deal, right? We're not seeing any hospitalizations.
They're saying you won't get as sick, but the hospital rates.
They're right there.
We're not seeing hospitalizations is what they're saying. Now, I don't know what they're saying in Allegheny. Now, I don't know what they're saying in Allegheny, but, you know, that's what, that's what we're hearing nationally is that you're not going to the hospital if you're vaccinated.
I've also heard that, you know, a lot of, you know, going back to, you know, a lot of these cases, the CDC and specifically states are also not, have not been really, some states have not been very good about tracking these breakthrough cases as well.
I'm just, I'm going by what I'm seeing in the last couple of days. I've seen cases and people were vaccinated and still are positive.
Yeah.
So the last couple of days, but not, how about the last weeks? Is it just all of a sudden?
Over the summer, a lot of cases, I didn't have a lot reported to me, only if it was related to summer school because if they weren't coming to school, people didn't let us know. In the last two days, I've had 10 cases reported to me. Five of them are staff members who are ready to come back to work, so they have to tell us now. And the others were related to school events, so there's probably more cases out there that aren't being reported to us yet because it's not related to anything in the school. If that makes sense.
Thank you.
What are the numbers that get us into the moderate range?
Ooh, I don't have that.
What are the numbers?
Yeah, to get back to the moderate.
Uh, let's see, we were in moderate, we were at 4.1. We jumped up to 12-something. 10 is the cutoff for high. So it's 10 and above for high. I, I just looked at it just a few seconds ago. There's a, there is another range. I'm assuming it's probably 5 to 10, 10 to 15, you know, and up, but I'll have to look at that and see. But we were at moderate, we were at 4.1. We were at moderate. Transmission, or that's positivity rate.
So that range of 5% or roughly 5?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Well, and that's based on positive test on a seven-day average. The one thing about the school data, so when you go to the health department, there's tons of charts to look at. You can get the exact day, drill into today and see what the numbers are. However, for the school data, they recommend that you use the chart that we have attached to our website. The reason for that is it's a seven-day average. They don't recommend schools making decisions on day-to-day data. They want us to look at an average because they don't want us coming back or making changes too quickly. Over the seven-day average, it gives you time to either go up or go down, shows the trend. So that's the one we're recommended to use from the school system, so it's a seven-day average. So when we look at the numbers, like for, they just, those are the numbers from last time, last week. They're supposed to change tomorrow. So they are from the last seven days. So we're always, always running seven days behind in the data that we use to make school decisions.
So we're making school decisions for, this was last week's data? Is that what you're saying?
No. The last time I presented data to you was three weeks ago, so that was really four weeks ago because the data is one week old by the time we get it because it's a seven-day average. So tomorrow, when we get the data, the new data, it will be a week ago, right?
The transmission rate, the, it's like so many cases per 100,000 is how we get from moderate to substantial to high. So so many cases per 100,000 population would be moderate and then it jumps up and then jumps up, so as the cases go up. And it goes up by like 50 and it's, I don't have them off the top of my head, but they base it on the amount of population.
And have those thresholds remained consistent since the start?
We've used that same chart that we determine low mod, there are low, moderate, substantial, and high. We've used that since day one, same chart.
And the metrics behind it haven't changed? Because I know at the beginning, it seemed like there was a lot of focus on like available hospital beds and things of that nature.
Go to the, you can see the trend. Go to VDA, VDH COVID dashboard. It's a slow, it's slow to load, but we can show it. Yeah. And then go to, scroll down a little bit. Go right there where it says cases, go to locality. No, go over where it says locality in those towns, right there. Takes a little bit to load, so you have to give it a minute. Oh, there it is. All right, go up there and put in Roanoke.
Select county.
And then down at the bottom where it says past 90 days.
Could it change?
You can, you can expand that out to 180. So this will show you a six-month trend. So this is the same chart we've always pulled up. And you can see how back in February where we were and where we're at now in August. And so that shows you the full-scale trend of where we're at. And that's all based on the same data for Roanoke County. So if you see back in, and that actually cuts a little bit, it looks like it's a little bit lower than what it, if you see it up close, because it actually is pretty much right where we were. If you scroll over it, Chuck, it'll show you the numbers. Like, get on the yellow line and it'll show you the actual number by date. So you can see where we're at. That's only going through June.
That's only through June, yeah.
Might should, you should be able to scroll out some because that doesn't look right. Oh, there you go. All right, you should be able to go to day's date, right there. So you see the cases for 100,000, seven-day average at 20.7. So if you follow that line, Chuck, and you can see how it changes, go back to like April, May, you can see, we, we've been down throughout the summer. So this puts us back kind of where we were back in April, when we hit the 20s again.
So 20, I'm still trying to understand this.
It's .02%.
Yeah.
Just that's, that's.
So, so 20 cases per 100,000 puts us in the high, high range, is that?
That's where we're at, yes.
That's one of the cases out of 100,000, okay.
Yep, it's per 100,000.
Yeah, okay.
That's how it's calculated. Any more questions about the chart before we go in?
Not that chart, but just the, the previous one. You had the vaccination rate for those under 18. Those under 18 would only be 12 to 18 because those under 12 are not going to get, we know the percentage here is zero. And the latest data that you shared with us, and I think you all got this on a regular basis last year, but the cumulative number of students that were exposed and teachers that were exposed and the number of quarantines and so forth. If you look at April of last year, and that's what you were looking at with those numbers, you had 520 cases of student quarantine in April. You had 45, well, no, take that back, 30, 31 staff that were in quarantine at that time. So that, that's equivalent to what you're looking at, you know, with those numbers that she's talking about. If you went back to what you were looking at in April, then those were the numbers. Remember though, you had fewer students in school because of virtual and you had more social distancing than you're going to be able to have starting next week when, when students go back. So I think, I think it's reasonable to expect that those numbers may not, hopefully, they don't occur, but they could. You know, that's kind of what you're looking at. Historically, when you get the number of students that we have in Roanoke County back in schools, that's what we had in April. If the percentage rate is the same or higher, I can't imagine that it's going to be a whole lot of difference. And the, the nurse pointed out the fact that, you know, within the week, she's had staff quarantined, she's had students quarantined, and we're not even back in school yet. These are people who self-reported because, you know, school was going to be starting next week. So I think it's, I think it's reasonable to, to expect that initially, we're going to see some numbers. I don't know what the number is that would make, move us, you know, from one stance or another stance, you know, regarding masking at all. I don't know what that number is. But it looks to me like with 47% under 18, you know, we're better off in the middle of high school than we're going to be in the elementary. Elementary, we have, with the exception of the things that we've done for mitigation, ventilation, cleaning, we're not going to be able to do the social distancing that we would like. The only other thing that we have are masks to reduce. And the policy on quarantine, correct me if I'm wrong, but the policy on quarantine has changed to if both are masked, then only the person who's positive is quarantined. If one of the other is not masked, then everyone within that radius of those students during the school day is quarantined. So that could push those numbers extremely high when you consider the number of students that we may have in a classroom, in a cafeteria, you know, all the places that they're going to be during the day to.
I do think our quarantine numbers will go up based on the way it is because the kids are closer together. And he's right, the, the guidance now says if they're zero to two feet apart, unvaccinated, they would have to quarantine. Three to six feet, if both the positive person and any of the kids within three to six feet anytime during the day, they would, if they're both masked, they wouldn't have to quarantine. But if the positive person doesn't have a mask on or the other one, then that, other kids would have to quarantine. So we potentially could have a lot more kids out quarantining.
And we did ask our principals at the principal meeting just this week to push to three feet in every single scenario that you can get three feet, just in case if we ever did need to implement the mask use, then we're already at three feet. That would reduce the quarantine. So it's not guaranteed we can meet the three feet in every single classroom, but they are going to push to get at three feet as best they can.
Which, we didn't have that last year. Last year, it was six feet, didn't matter if you had a mask. This year, they're giving us that leeway, so it could really make a difference.
Do they break down the numbers of positive cases by age group?
I don't think so.
Number of cases by age group. There's that one shot, that one site I just went to, I bet it's in there because there's a demographic tab, and I don't know if that just shows ethnicity, it may show age group, I'm not exactly sure. Go out one more, Chuck, there's, if you look at that, see all those top, things at the top? Every one of those has a different, different chart. You can, you can dig down to all, any information you want to find.
It does have it by age.
Yeah, there's by age.
But that's all in Virginia.
And you can probably go Roanoke because a lot of those charts, you can drill it down to Roanoke.
Oh, there's the health district right up there.
Yeah, the hospital, hospitalization numbers are there, the vaccination numbers are there. You can drill down on those charts any way you want to go.
Okay. And this is data from the beginning, correct?
Now, this is new information that they, as long as we've been in the pandemic, they have added these new charts because there's, they're starting to be able to show us more information. We originally did not have access to all this information and now we do.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it says it's updated today.
The great thing about this information, it's, it's updated every day.
Mm-hmm. And, and that's the Roanoke region, that's not Roanoke County, or that's, I'm assuming that's Roanoke County and Roanoke City, right? Because I didn't see it.
In Salem.
Okay, okay. So, and once again, this is from the beginning, since they started tracking, correct?
8,000, what does that say?
I would think.
It seems like it, yeah.
Okay.
So zero to nine is obviously the, the lowest of all those age groups.
Yeah.
Eighty-plus is lowest. On the left-hand side. You're looking at Virginia there, Chuck.
Good point. What, you know, you mentioned a situation that could be that you quarantine a whole class. What provisions are we thinking about for a type of, you know, continued learning, virtual learning? What are we going to do for, for these? If it does happen?
So in elementary, well, secondary, we have Blackboard. So all the students have access to Blackboard, they can email their teachers and say in perfect communication. In elementary, they're going to have two options. We have laptops at each elementary school ready to go. We're getting parents to sign AUP agreements so they have access to that laptop. When we shut down a classroom, if we have to, those laptops will be distributed to that classroom. The teacher will continue to teach if she's healthy enough to do that, if she happens to be in a close contact. And then they can, they can, if, and they can even assign work through Blackboard like they do at high school. But if a parent wants paper copies and they don't want to mess with the laptop, they can request that as well through the school. So we have two different options for that.
So it would be, I mean, essentially, it would, at the elementary school level, it would be as if, I mean, if they were out for surgery for two or three weeks, we're, I mean, you know, we can give them their work, we can, you know, try to prevent as much learning loss as possible.
Yeah, and our quarantine.
But now we have access to laptops if they want to at the elementary level.
And our quarantine time's down to, can be down to seven days now. You know, at one point, we're at 14, then we went to 10, now we're given the seven-day option, which basically means if they test on the fifth day and they're negative, they can come back on the seventh day. So that's basically five days of instruction on the eighth day. That's five days of instruction they miss. So, but they have to meet all that criteria in order for that to happen. But, you know, that, but, you know, of course, parents have to find last-minute childcare. And then just from experience, when, the way we shut, the way classrooms have been shut down in the past is if you have two cases in a classroom, and the only way we could have gotten it is from each other in that classroom, we contact the health department, the health department makes a recommendation to shut down the classroom. So most of the time, that comes in the evening, so all the kids are at home, we don't let them come back to school. So then we've got to, you know, get parents to come pick up the laptops, get the instruction in place, we have to make phone calls to every kid in the classroom. We've only had to do that a handful of times. And I will, I do think it's because we had the mask on that helped prevent the transmission and we had the distancing. But without the distancing, without the mask, I do feel that we're going to transmit more, meaning more people are going to test positive from the interaction. And then that's going to put us closer to putting more classrooms out.
Mr. Chairman? I know that you all have worked extremely hard in the last year to keep instruction the main thing, and parents appreciate that. Every parent that I've spoken to in the past two weeks has said, you know, I appreciate what you did last year with our students, getting them, you know, the materials they needed, the resources they needed to do it. But it took a pretty good toll on our teachers. And that, those were planned activities that we had there. You know, as you suggested, you could get a call tonight that tomorrow, your class is not going to be there and you don't have resources in hand, teachers have to come up with lesson plans in addition to, if they're still teaching, you know, students in that class. I really truly believe anything we can do to, I, I believe there's, there's absolute agreement on we want students back in school, but I think we've got to come up with some solutions so that we can minimize the amount of time that they're out. Getting them back is the first thing, but we got to keep them there. And with the policy that they have for the quarantine with the masking, you know, it's the difference between one student going out and 20 going out in terms of, you know, what the teachers and the parents and the, you know, employers and everybody else is going to be, you know, the chain reaction here that's going to occur once those students are home for five days, seven days. The other question I have is, you know, if they're out for, if they're going to be quarantined for 10, but they can come back with a negative test, where do they go to get the negative test? Do we do that? Do the parent, are the parents responsible for going to the health department, you know, for that? Who's responsible for that?
Parent.
And that's a question, that's not rhetorical.
Parent.
The parents are?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's another step, you know, that if their child was not the instigator, but simply a participant, you know, who was in the circle, that's, you know, childcare, that's teaching from home, that's additional costs or inconvenience or convenience to find out that they're not, but it's still an inconvenience, you know, to have the test done and so forth. It's, it's not as simple, it's not as simple as, you know, well, they'll be home and we can send them resources because they got to come back at some point. And whether they come back in five days, seven days, or 10 days is dependent upon, you know, their test and, you know, the severity of all these other things that are out there. So I, I would hope that when the time comes, you know, that we take a look at the, the whole global picture. There's no simple solution to this. There's no solution that's going to sell, you know, satisfy everyone. But I think our main goal is to open schools and have them open to as many kids as we can every day. But I think our main goal is to open schools and have them open to as many kids as we can every day. Because we all know, our teachers are at their best when they're in a classroom with their students, with the instructional materials, the routines, and everything else that goes along with that teaching-learning cycle. We know that. We know we had a good run last year with the, with the virtual, but the virtual was planned. We knew, teachers knew they were going to be teaching virtual X number of days, X number of students. You don't know that. You don't know that, you know, if, if this, if this quarantine gets to the point where we're looking at. You know, that, that, that April time that I was sharing with you earlier, if you go back to like January, December, and November, which were really the months that we had the most number of people that were identified, you had like fourteen seventy-two in part of December and January. You had twelve ninety-two in November. You know, those are substantial numbers. And that's, again, in a smaller population, that was masked for the most part, and distanced. That's a lot of people. I don't have anything else to say.
Just to clarify one thing, I think it was already said, just for clarity, that forty-seven point eight percent children under eighteen vaccination rate, just to clarify, that's kids twelve to eighteen?
Yes.
Because the number would be zero under eight, under twelve.
Yeah, that's right. And that has gone up six percent since the last time I reported it, which is good. And the adult population went up one percent. Notice there's the hospitalization numbers that you were asking about, Mr. Greenway. Currently, as of today, in our hospitals and our health district, eighty-one percent are unvaccinated, nineteen percent are vaccinated.
A clarification on that zero or under eighteen, is it eleven to eighteen as it was reported last time?
It's twelve.
It's twelve eighteen.
They've changed it?
Twelve to eighteen, yeah. And then one, one thing we were worried about, we actually reported to nineteen, which we started thinking about, are college kids in that number? This number I pulled is eighteen and under, which hopefully has pulled out the majority of the college kids, because you know a lot of college kids are required to get tested, I mean, vaccinated in order to go to college. So I was a little bit worried that those numbers might run these numbers up, but we did, we were able to drill down and get eighteen to twelve.
The vaccine is approved for twelve and up, so it doesn't include the eleven-year-olds.
Okay. And this is just information that we've already talked about. Currently, there's a, things that we know to start the school year, there's a CDC federal order that applies to all public transportation. We know that we have to have masks on buses, that is a federal order. July twenty-seventh, CDC updated their guidance since the last time I reported to you. And now they are recommending that vaccinated and unvaccinated people should be masked indoors, in school, all teacher, staff, and visitors. And the CDC also recommends that fully vaccinated people now wear masks in public whenever you're in a community area that's substantial or high. And we are in high. In Roanoke County's public schools, our strategies are number one, to get students back in, in class in person and to, of course, keep them there as much as possible. Strive to meet the three-feet distancing because that seems to be the key if we were to mask. That's going to be our golden ticket, is that three-feet distancing. But not at the expense of not being able to accommodate every kid in school face-to-face. So there are large classrooms that will not be able to meet the three-feet distancing, and we understand that, but we're going to push to the three feet in every case scenario that we can. We will continue to implement layered prevention strategies that we've already, we've had these in place since day one. So we're going to keep all of those in place, they're not going away. Quarantine protocol, we've talked about this a little bit. Positive cases in school without physical distancing, without masking, it's a six-foot radius, right? So we're, like you say, we're quarantining kids in a six-foot circle every place they go throughout the day. Vaccinated individuals would not have to be quarantined as long as they're not exhibiting symptoms. So that is definitely a advantage for those who are vaccinated, they would not have to lose time from school. Each positive case in elementary level would likely result in student quarantines from school bus and classrooms. The transmission within the classroom could possibly shut classrooms down like I explained before. I think we were, we were very lucky, last year we only had to shut down four or five classes. And every one of those classes we shut down, it was either a sped, sped self-contained classroom or a very pre-K, K classroom. Those were in situations where we struggled to keep masks on kids. We did not have to shut down a regular ed classroom, and part of that is because we wore masks and we were distanced. So I, I do feel like that, that helped us prevent shutdowns. And then we talked about the new update from the CDC. Now, they've changed that to help get schools back, kids back into school. That's the reason they changed the CDC guidance, encouraging kids to wear masks, keeping them three feet apart. They don't have to be quarantined.
And that doesn't apply to the teachers?
Right.
They don't, that does not, the three to six feet does not apply to teachers, they're still with the six feet.
Good point.
For quarantine, sorry.
No, that's right. And we've already talked about this, the seven-day return. You have a test on the fifth day, if it's negative, you can return on the eighth day. Vaccinated individuals do not have to quarantine as long as they're not symptomatic. We used to send, last year we sent a letter to every parent and every staff member every time there was a case. It got to the point where we were sending so many at some of the schools that the parents just tuned them out. We got, we were sending all calls and letters, and then we got complaints that we were constantly calling their phones. We don't want to send too much information to where they don't pay attention to the information we're sending them. So we've made the decision not to send those letters this year, but we are going to still keep our dashboard updated. Those will be updated within twenty-four hours of every case. I will tell you, in most scenarios, they're updated within two or three hours. Every single time the case was reported to the nurse, the nurse goes to Charlene, it comes to me, and I call Chuck. So it, it's very fast turnaround. So parents and staff can go to our website, pull up the chart, and those cases will be, be there. Here are our plans for instruction, which we just shared for our secondary and elementary. Some other things that we have changed in our health plan, one is lunches will be served in the cafeterias, not delivered to the classrooms like we did last year. We're currently in the process of opening up all of our water fountains, they're all going to be flushed and ready to open school. We are encouraging kids to bring water bottles to fill rather than to drink out of fountains. Buses will have extra masks, as well as schools will all have extra masks on hand. And visitors will be limited during substantial and, and high transmission. We did open up for visitors, but we're going to, we've told principals, only essential visitors at this time.
Real quick, I mean, maybe in the next week, we can get some clarification on the lunches, because I've been, I've spoken with two elementary principals this week, and they plan on splitting the lunches to reduce the crowd size in the cafeteria. The lunches will be in classrooms, you know, and they're going to alternate that.
But they can do that if they have the staff to do, if it's on the staff to do it in all schools.
Gotcha, okay.
It's based on cafeteria staff, if they have the staff to manage it, and I'm assuming if they've done that, they've run that by them. Yeah. Okay, so kind of where we're at after three weeks ago when we presented information, we were in a very different place. So mask consideration at this time because we are at high community transmission. Based on those changes, you know, something to consider would be to require masks to be worn indoors for all students and staff in grades pre-K through six while we were in substantial and high transmission. So meaning that when we do get to moderate, using the seven-day average, rather than going up and down every day, when we get to the seven-day average, we could reconsider and go back to relieving that mask requirement. But while we're in substantial and high, that could be a consideration. A consideration at pre-K through twelve, we would strongly encourage everybody to wear masks because we are in high transmission. So that would be something that we would encourage everybody to do, just to help cut down on the community transmission. Masks are not necessary to be worn outside for recess, PE class, athletic activities. So when students, if they were to wear masks in elementary school, they could take them off when they go out to recess. We could also build in mask breaks as long as we provide distancing within the classroom. We need to be distanced before we give mask breaks, but as long as teachers can work that in the classroom, there's no problem with that either. Athletic and extracurricular activities, we're going to follow, there's new guidance that we just put out. Went back and added some extra mitigation strategies for when we are in substantial and high transmission. Some of those include, like during practices, increasing your distance. You know, if you're sharing equipment, wash it more frequently. It's some of the things we've been practicing all along, but we pulled them out of the plan because we were starting school in moderate. Now we've put them back in the plan as mitigation strategies for coaches to go back and consider using. And so they're, they're the things, they're probably, they probably never even took them out, right? Because they've been practicing all summer long under those same criteria. So the athletic plan, nothing will change there, no mandates there other than just the consideration of extra mitigation strategies. And then, of course, visitors would be limited to the school during substantial and high transmission.
So they can touch the ball this year. They can touch the ball.
They can touch the ball, yeah. They can actually pass it back and forth.
It won't transmit this year.
Yeah.
But it has to go through the car wash between.
It won't transmit this year.
Yeah. And all seriousness, that is something that I guess they've learned over the past year is the, the touch surfaces seem to be less common in terms of transmission versus the aerials. That is something I guess they've learned. So that does help as far as passing the ball.
It does. And then mask considerations, when we're at moderate to low community transmission, mask would be at the discretion of the parent, pre-K through twelve would be a thought. And then, of course, still if you're unvaccinated, pre-K through twelve, it would still be encouraged to wear masks because that's the current, that's the current stance to help protect those who are unvaccinated. So that's all the information we have to share. Any questions?
Yeah, if, let's just say if we went back to pre-K through, you know, if, when, you know, based on the numbers, how would you base the numbers? You're not basing it on Allegheny Health Region, you're basing it on our numbers.
Roan County.
Roanoke County. Do you, so you would be able to go from, say, a high range to a moderate range and then no mask? Is that what you're?
We jumped, just to give you an example, and when you see the chart, you can see the, yeah, if Chuck wants to put it up, you can see the sharp incline. In one week, we went from moderate to high in one week.
So we skipped the substantial.
We did. So that's how quickly you can go up, and that's also how quickly you could, could come down.
I mean, we're at a tenth of a percent and we're in a high. I mean, that's, I mean, it just seems things change so quickly, you know, and I, and I, I mean, I don't have the answers, but I mean, you know, we want kids back in school. But it's just funny how, you know, we were dead, you know, how, how in a six-month period, we, you know, when we talk about quarantine, it was fifteen minutes over a twenty-four-hour period at six feet, within six feet. And now magically we're at three feet. I mean, things just seem to change so rapidly, you know. And I think, and I, I mean, honestly think this board as a whole, I mean, we're prepared to change rapidly.
If need be, you know, if we do, but, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, you can see there how we drastically jumped up two notches very quickly. So within one week, we went from moderate in the yellow to high in one week. So, but notice on out the chart, you know, we stayed at substantial, and you see how we've been going up and down? You know, there for a while. It, it looks like for, you know, since about February, we've been making sharp decreases and increases just about every week. There's March, and, and so, but we did stay in moderate there for a while over the summer. But notice we did have that one increase to substantial and came right back down. So it's possible we could come back down.
All right, so the core indicators, number of new cases per one hundred thousand, so we had eighty, eighty case, so let's say eighty-one cases, right?
If you hover on it Chuck, it'll tell you exactly. Seven twenty.
On July the twenty-fourth, we're not in school.
Yeah, no, 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 these are for all of Roanoke, these are positive cases.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Maybe on the bottom one.
I was just looking at core indicator, I just want to make sure.
Eighty point eight.
Yeah. Yeah.
That was July twenty-fourth, though.
Yeah, we're, we're higher than that one. We're going to, I'm sure we're higher, we're up three hundred and seventy-one. And I would say that twelve point four is going to be higher as well.
And I want to clarify too, that twelve point four percent, you know, just for information purposes, that's percentage of PCR tests that are positive, that's the percentage of people taking a test.
Correct.
Who went positive, so that's, that.
You can have asymptomatics that aren't getting tested and be spreading it.
Right. So we're not saying twelve point four percent of the population is positive. It's twelve point four percent of the people who actually took, bothered to take a test, okay.
Yes.
And a lot of what's happened.
They'd be in the hospital, we'd know it, right?
Yeah, absolutely would. And a lot of people who are vaccinated aren't getting tested because when you go to the healthcare professionals and you tell them, well, I'm vaccinated and you're showing some symptoms, they don't necessarily recommend a COVID test. So they're, you know, they could be transmitting and they're not even identified as positive, which is, I think, concerning.
Any other questions, comments?
I also reached out to the School Health Advisory Board today. I talked to Dr. Delaney and Dr. Johnson, both pediatricians. Dr. Delaney started out with all unvaccinated kids should be wearing masks, including secondary. But he didn't see how you could decide who did or, you know, how we could follow who was vaccinated, who was not. So his recommendation with the way the trends are going is that all kids be vaccinated. Dr. Johnson said absolutely mandate pre-K through six, wearing masks, but she'd prefer that all the students be masked because of the trends they're seeing. And she said kids in the, in the pediatric ICU with it, so. The health department's stance was, they go with what the CDC says, which is we should mask the kids, get masks everybody. As far as everybody else, it was kind of split, but nobody said we shouldn't be wearing masks. The rest of the people either said definitely pre-K to six, and about half of them said everybody. From our School Health Advisory Board.
Questions, comments?
Something to consider, I appreciate the information. I mean, that's how we make decisions, based on the information.
I guess it's easier to, I guess it's easier to come down than it is to go up.
I think it'll be hard with the sixth graders because they're seventh, they're with the seventh and eighth graders who can be vaccinated, where a lot of the sixth graders can't be vaccinated, so that's kind of a difficult thing to deal with.
Yeah, it's eleven years old and younger, none of which, and so some sixth graders are still elevens, that's where you get into.
And they're all middle school students.
Right, all the sixth grade for us is, is at the middle school level, that's what Ms. Vale was pointing out, you know. If, if we did sixth grade but not seventh and eighth, it's just something that the, you know, principals and teachers would have to work out. But typically in our middle schools, you know, grade levels are sort of my hall, my area of the schools, certainly my class, so it'd be, if you do it all.
You do one of them, do them all.
Do sixth, seventh, and eighth, put them all. We don't know who's vaccinated, who's not, go ninth through twelfth, let's do them all.
I mean, we don't know who's vaccinated and who's not.
It's a good point, and certainly our school division's going that, that route, and we could, you choose to, that's what CDC is currently saying. The VDH and DDOE recommendation was to, it left as a local decision, but they said, you know, they really strongly recommend that at the elementary, and I guess that the idea is those are the kids who have not been vaccinated. So just, you know, eleven years or, and, and under, so for us that is really pre-K through sixth grade, that that'd be required, and then for other ones, do it by vaccination, which is hard to, you know, police, obviously. But that's why, yes, we're bringing it back to you today. It would, it would seem prudent to really consider at least the pre-K through six, just because, you could argue the other way too, in terms of all students. But at the very least, you know, pre-K through six, just because those are the kids, you know, forget about transmitting and all that kind of stuff, but those are the kids who have not been vaccinated. And, and really, in the name of just this, this quarantine stuff, you know, keeping kids in school as much as we can, it would seem like something that would really help us if we, if we went that route.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Greenway?
I hesitate to say this, but let me give you the flip side of that. So I have a nephew that's got asthma and allergies. He will not be coming to school because he can't wear that mask all day. Not, you know, one way or the other to try and sway it, but that's another facet of this. I have two grandkids, but one will start kindergarten, one will start first grade. So when people ask you and say, well, do you have any skin in the game, do you have kids in the system? I've got skin in the game. game? Do you have kids in the system?" I've got skin in the game. You know, it's not, we don't take it lightly. But, you know, I, I just, you know, that, that's my point of view, not trying to force that on anyone else. But when you ask why I think, I only had one, I've not had anybody from my, my district question me about this. So the only ones I've heard from are, are one district, really, maybe a couple from another one. But outside of that, so, you know, that's just why and where I'm thinking is that I really don't want my grandkids going with the mask. And that's, so that's, you know, I'm putting it out there to be criticized, but that's just me personally. And I get, we definitely want these kids, to Mr. Weimer's point, we want these kids to stay in school, right? That's, that's the idea here. Last year was just an absolute, we did, we did better than most, and it just is not the way we should teach these kids. And I'm worried about the fact that we're going to drive kids to private schools more, and we're going to hear more about private schools. We lost, what, 300 last year? Hopefully, you know, the ADMs and all that doesn't factor in. I hope, I think the state will take care of that. But anyway, I just think it's, you know, we, each one of these guys, all of us in this room, we want what's best for these kids. So, you know, when you, and many folks that, that have issued an email or whatever have been very respectful. But because we feel differently doesn't mean we're not looking for the same end goal. And so I think it's important to know that. Thank you.
I think we all, in some way, I think, have skin in the game. I mean, I've got grandchildren as well. And I think we, we all want to, want to look at this situation and not have kids going into quarantine, going into now, who are most susceptible when we look at this? Who are they? Pre K?
Three sets.
Through five, right? So I mean, it's, you know, there are situations, as you said, the asthma and different things like that, that kids cannot, you know, medically cannot wear a mask. And that's, I think that's certainly a consideration, and we have that. But, you know, I just think that, you know, we gotta do everything we can to try to mitigate as much as we can.
What do we do in a situation like that when there's, oh, this?
I can speak to that. One of the things that we do with both employees and students, because we realize we do have many kids and employees who have asthma, we will accommodate any child that has a need. So last year, you know, staff knew that, principals knew that, we did not have one, one need where a child requested accommodations or a family requested accommodations for masking. So we can accommodate. And we did have also staff that were concerned, and, and they ended up not having, and, you know, somebody said, "I have, you know, panic attacks." And I said, "Then go to a side of the room and simply take your mask down until you're able to put it back on." And they ended up not having problems. The, the biggest concern was the what-ifs. And once we got in there, even, you know, I was speaking to a special ed teacher just the other day who has a self-contained class of students who have cognitive disabilities, and she sent videos home the first week where she was in a mask, and, and she said, "None of my kids had a problem." Our preschoolers, most of the time, they had their masks on and didn't miss a beat. So we will definitely work through a health plan. If there's a need for any kids that do come to school with a mask, we will work with those families. We don't want our kids to feel uncomfortable.
The, just for, one other point of reference, the public health order that the state health commissioner issued that applied over the summer, which expired July 25th, had provisions, you know, exceptions that you could be in place. And I would certainly recommend that any local requirement that we would do would certainly include those kinds of exceptions.
I wonder why the governor hasn't issued a state mandate. I mean, he's, he's head of the health and safety, right?
Is he?
Huh?
Paul Sticks?
Don't start that with me. I don't want to hear that word.
I mean, is that, is that what, you know, that it's gonna be?
I don't know. I have no idea. But I'm just wondering why.
I don't either. But is it something that?
Last time I said that word, it got twisted all over the place. So, yep, I'm out of that.
I'm just figuring, what is it with, why, what is he, what is he saying?
It's obvious what it is, but.
But you're not gonna say it.
No, heck no, I don't, let's let him tell us.
Any other questions or comments on this topic?
No.
So.
Just wish the best.
Yeah, I mean, thanks for the information. I mean, and the board, I mean, we will certainly consider and, and, you know, make, make an appropriate recommendation, okay? You know, so it's not something I'm gonna take lightly, you know. But I don't, I don't think we're prepared, we're prepared to vote on that today. So.
All right.
So if anyone disagrees with me, you're more than welcome to make a motion to, to vote on mask requirements.
Mr. Chairman, I respect every one of you for the job that you did last year. Absolutely, hands down. And everyone that I've talked to has been very civil and very appreciative of the law, the lack of knee-jerk decisions that this board made as it lock stepped its way back into kids being in school. But I really believe that we need to take the recommendation of the superintendent's staff, from the health department, from the pediatricians, from those people who are going to be working in the trenches, because it's gonna happen. I really believe that we need to mask up in elementary for the reasons I've shared. And there's no, there's no other agenda, other than we want kids in school, and we want them to be there as often as possible and avoid all of the quarantine that we can. It's as simple as that. And I might not get a second, and that's okay, but that's my recommendation and a motion to the board that we take action. It's easier, as Mr. Ray said, it's easier to step down than step up. You know, if we don't do this, then how many students is it gonna take in Roanoke County before we decide to mask up? Are we gonna go with April of 520? Are we gonna go with December of 1470? Are we gonna go with November of 1293? Are we gonna go with October? October was when we started bringing them back. You know, we had like 474 right off the bat. And that's with all the mitigation that we had in place. So I, I don't know what the number is that would, that would lead people to believe that we need to go that direction. But I'd rather come from that direction than have to go to that direction because teachers, students, parents, community, all have a stake in, in what we're doing. Having kids in school is best for them, is best for their parents, is best for employers, is best for any group that you want to look at that's gonna be affected by this decision. And I'll leave it at that. I make a motion that we mask K-5.
Anybody have a second?
What was, what was your recommendation when you said, you said something about getting further information, or what do you?
What, no, I mean.
I was trying to figure out what you were.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm not prepared to make, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I'm just not prepared to make a decision today. I'm still hearing from people in the community on, on both sides of, of the issue, and I think we need to respect that as well. Yeah, I think we do need to come up, and this is just my opinion, we do need to come up with a, you know, we do need to make a decision before, before the start of school, you know. But I, me personally, I want to absorb this information. And I mean, you know, we all talk individually, you know, we'll have updated numbers tomorrow as well, that are a lot more current than today. So, and, and, you know, in my mind, I mean, school starts next Thursday. If we choose to, you know, require masks at minimum in the elementary school level, we have time to do that. That's, that's just my feeling. I'm one person.
I throw this out again. I said it in an email, you know, no, I don't like the idea, but we can throw it to the, a survey to the parents, right? We could, we could offer a survey to the parents, much like Radford did, and follow their lead in letting, letting the parents speak. And maybe they tell us, you know, one way or the other. The, you know, the, I guess the chance you take is that it's a split, but I don't think so. But I think that's, you know, something we could do as well. Throw that out and try to avoid these last-minute deals. But not, nobody responded. Well, I guess Mr. London did. He wasn't thrilled with it either. But, you know, in lieu of, you know, where we're at, that was an option. And if the people speak and that's what they want, then that's, you know, I'm a firm believer, you know, it's not just a vote for my conviction, it's a vote for what the people voted you into office, asked you to do. So as I've said, I've, you know, received many calls or whatever about that, or, you know, when you see people in the community. And it's, and, and I don't want to use this one side or the other. It's a hard decision. You know, part of me says, do you just do it? You know, do you just give into the, I just can't, if I don't feel that's necessarily the right thing. At some point, we have to come back to a normal society. And, and I don't take that lightly, and I'm not playing sides. I get tired of hearing about sides, you know, well, you're on this side. I'm not on any side. I'm on a kid's side. I'm on my grandkid's side. So, but, you know, a survey is an option to give us, you know, some data, you know. We're late in the game, but, you know, I'll throw that idea back out.
Well, I don't know. I, you know, like, I think surveys are good, but surveys can be tainted as well, so you don't know.
I asked Dr. Nicely about that, and I said, he said we could have one vote per student, you know. So he said by, you know, by the students, we could, we, because that was my concern, was that somebody vote 100 times and skew the whole thing. But he says we can control that. So it's an idea.
Well, you know, I do, I respect Mr. Weimer, and I respect his, his decision. I mean, if he wants to make a motion, you know, I think that's, that's the opportunity for us to do something if we want to at this point. So I could second the motion, and then it would come to the floor, and if it goes up or down, and we can always change as we move forward.
So, Mr., go ahead. Mr. London?
I think our current plan that we have in place is that very easy to change, should the numbers, should the numbers indicate that that needs to do that. It's, it's a situation where a year ago, we heard from a lot of the same people who said, "You should be 100% virtual, you will never make it, you'll be shut down in two weeks. You try to go in person, even if you're doing a hybrid schedule, it's gonna spread." It seems like a lot of the emails we received over the last week or so have been from a lot of those same people who, who felt like we wouldn't be able to do what we did last year. And, and we went, and I know masking played a role in that. I'm certain that that helped with our distancing. I'm, I'm not at a point where I'm ready to, to mandate and, and require masking. I will strongly encourage students to wear masks, but I don't know that I would, would make it a requirement at this point for everybody, no matter whether it was K through five or, or K through 12. And to Mr. Weimer's point, I mean, I guess we could keep more students in the classroom when strep throat starts to, and I know strep throat and the flu are, are not nearly as transmissible as COVID. I understand that. But if we were to, where does it stop, I guess? I mean, the classroom has strep throat, do we say, "Oh, every kid in that classroom, now you have to wear a mask?" That'll keep more kids in the classroom. But if we want to take a vote on it, I'm prepared.
Okay. Mr. Weimer, make your motion. If you can repeat it again. If you, will you repeat it again?
I'll repeat the motion. The motion is to require students in K through five to be masked in class.
Okay. All right. Madam Clerk, roll.
Mr. Weimer?
Yes.
Mr. London?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Greenway?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Mr. Chairman.
So, and I will say that, that's not the end of it. I still want the data from the last week, and, you know, we can certainly make any recommendations, you know, between now and next Thursday. So it's not a decision I, you know, I take lightly, but at this point, that's, you know, that's the way I'm leaning. So, yes, Mr. Weimer?
Thank you for having the vote. I think that one of the things that we need to keep in mind is, you know, it's gonna have to be a call meeting, you know, to, to have the vote because it is a policy vote, and that's fine. But if we're not going to mask, I think we all need to give a lot of consideration to what will it take to mask? You know, how far are we willing to go in terms of risking staff, students, siblings at home, parents at home, all those other kind of things that are, that are related to this? How far are we willing to go before we decide that, you know, this is one of those mitigating things that we can't control? We can't control ventilation in some of the schools, we can't control the distancing. The only thing that we really can control is how we protect the individual students. And the recommendation from everyone that I've seen and heard and read is to be masked. So when we meet again, let's be thinking about, you know, what's it, what's it gonna take?
We also have to keep in mind too, if we need to, we can break away. We have a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors on Tuesday the 10th. So we will be in person before then.
That was the only point, that we would need to have another meeting.
Exact, exactly. So we will be meeting in person then, so we could, on Tuesday the 10th with the Board of Supervisors, so if we needed to.
Mr. Chairman.
My hope too, is once, my hope too, is that this is, I mean, I'm not an expert, but at the end of the day, if, if these are strong recommendations from the CDC, in my mind, this needs to be a community effort. I mean, you know, and, you know, like you said, it needs, I mean, if we're gonna do it, it needs to, I mean, we need to do it full-time. So it's almost like we're picking and choosing where we're gonna mask. I mean, I was at Kroger this morning, and, I mean, probably 10% of the people in there were wearing masks. I mean, obviously going against CDC guidelines there, you know, for masking indoors, even for vaccinated people. So, you know, I think it would be helpful, you know, our surrounding communities. Some of you still don't know what Roanoke City and Salem were doing with their schools yet. I know they've got a little bit of extra time, you know. But I feel like this needs to be a whole community effort and not just a school system effort. But once again, that's just my opinion.
It's an excellent point. I mean, we, yeah, I mean, we're picking and choosing where we do this. Do we, you know, do we take the, the sports teams? Do we, you know, that are going into locker rooms? I mean, sweating, showering, whatever, you know, do we, how does that, you know, how does that factor? So, good point.
Yeah. And, I mean, and like I said, I mean, we've got a, you know, we've got another get-together in a week, and, you know, we can certainly, happy to revisit.
See how it's going.
Yeah, see how it's going and revisit it.
And I, you know, and a survey may do the trick, maybe the one that the people do come out and say boldly that this is what we want or don't want. So that's, that is an option.
So.
So.
I had one question. This is kind of, this isn't where we're at. Let me see if I can find my message. I had someone ask me, and I'll, I told them, let's, I don't know if they don't feel comfortable doing it, but how are we handling a, the teachers in that, are we requiring them to mask up K to 12? What is the, what is the policy there? And the reason I ask? And the reason I ask is I've had somebody message me and I couldn't answer. And I said, I think you're gonna have to talk to the superintendent, but they feel, you know, how this works. They feel more comfortable with me bringing it as a question here. Um, basically, let's see, I'm having a conversation about upcoming school year and possibly being able to wear a mask. Are there any consequences for us refusing to wear one? Husband and wife uh both vaccinated because they didn't want to quarantine to affect our ability to do our jobs as teachers. I'm done with the mask and and don't want to wear one. So have we, what what is our, what is our policy moving forward for the teachers?
Yes, currently as far as masks go, I mean, there is no local requirement. So, I mean, you know, so if if the board wants to enact, you know, such a requirement, then we'll certainly, you know, force it accordingly.
I don't want to, but that's my question. Are they gonna be held to a different standard than our children?
If if you all were to enact a requirement?
So there's no requirement now.
Correct.
You know, it's individual, uh, okay.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Any other topics on this? All right, let's move on. Uh, we got Mr. Chris Low, item four point oh five, preliminary Burton building footprint discussion. Worried about the two hour mark right now before, cause Chris is gonna be with us for the next, uh.
Does want to take a quick five?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, all right, we'll take a quick five.
Maybe trying to air up a little bit.
Is that okay, Chuck?
This feels good. That's our turn here.
Recap on the building, um, the Burton Building footprint study. We hired RRMM to do a study on providing us um, an extreme um, of one end of the spectrum to the other on uh, size of Burton with our program. What kind of acreage we would need for a minimum design? And what kind of acres we would need for a, that big sprawling design?
Mm-hmm.
And then they're also gonna do some, some in-between, just so we can see what kind of acreages we're looking at as we're trying to figure out what property to place the Burton on. So, uh, Mr. Motley, uh, sent these two drawings to me today. And I'm gonna try to play with it zooming in and out a little bit. But basically, this is concept one. Concept one is actually the smaller of the two footprints. Now, we were looking at, I believe, we're around a hundred and fifty-six thousand, a hundred and fifty-two thousand square feet of program space. But when you include corridors and restrooms and custodial closets and, and boiler rooms, things like that. Mr. Motley came up with the, with our minimum square footage that we're gonna need, or, or reasonable square footage is two hundred and fifteen thousand square feet, regardless of whether we use a, a small condensed plan or a sprawling plan. We're looking at two hundred and fifteen thousand square feet. So that's what these concept plans are. Now, please, just ignore the locations of some of the rooms and things like that, because again, this is just all concept. You want us to fit it into a plan, so we, so we know what we're looking at.
Mr. Lo, how does that compare to some of the estimates? Uh, forgive me, I can't.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty close to what we anticipated.
I felt like we were over two hundred.
Yeah, we're right around that two hundred, two hundred and fifteen, well, on our own estimates, you know, in-house. Um, so, again, I think that's a little conservative, you know, um, but, but I, I think it's pretty reasonable a- as well.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, see, so if this, this, this layout, uh, it's, it's in black and white, but what you can see is all the white, I'm gonna use my mouse, so then you can see where I'm at. Up here, th- this is, this is a wing, this is a, a, a main hall back to uh, the, the main admin area. And then you have a, a, a double-loaded corridor here. Um, this is culinary and things like that. This area right here will be a covered area for your masonry and automotive and, and those type of things where they actually need some outdoor space, uh, storage, things like that. So this design, right here, and let's see, I'm gonna move it up. The reason it's a little bit more condensed is because it has a second story over this area right here. So these are the second-story classrooms. This design, all this stuff that's on the first floor is what we require to have to be on the first floor. Um, you, obviously, auto- automotive and things like that had to have fir- first, uh, floor classrooms. Um, and then these other, this, this, this wing here at the bottom that you see me circling around, that would be, uh, uh, classrooms that would be available to be on, on, on a second level. Okay? So this is two hundred and fifteen thousand square feet. Um, it does have, only had two hundred and twenty parking spaces, but this is about twenty-one acres, approximately twenty-one acres for the smaller design. So if you remember when Mr. Motley presented to us, he felt like we would need twenty or acres or so for what we were looking at. And more well-defined, he's, he's, he was pretty close to being right on it. So we're looking at twenty, twenty-one acres for a smaller layout. Now, I'm gonna jump up here and show you the, the more sprawling layout. Everything on this layout is one, um, one, one story, okay? Um, it's kind of an L, a U shape, it's called a U shape, okay? And there's also some future, uh, growth areas that they incorporate in the design. He's meeting our program here, two hundred and fifteen thousand square feet, first story. And this, this particular design takes up forty acres. But they a- already feel like they can value engineer eight acres out of that. So for this big sprawling design, the other end of the spectrum, we'd be looking more like for a thirty-two acre property to be able to put a design like this on.
And this is a one-story?
And this is all one-story. Yes, sir. Um, it, it also provides space for, for future use.
How many square feet did you say?
Two hundred and fifteen thousand square feet.
So this one too?
Yes, they're both two hundred and fifteen thousand square feet.
I gotcha.
It's a big difference.
It's just spread out more.
Went from twenty, twenty-one acres to thirty-two essentially.
That's, that's correct, yes, sir. Uh, and, and this one, he also, there's probably some acres to save as well, because in this one, they, they, they maxed out the parking at, um, four.
Four hundred and thirty?
Yep, four hundred and thirty pit spaces.
Chris, what is that between the U?
The Barton Forest?
Burton, Barton?
Or, yeah. What is? Yeah, it says Barton, I, I don't know why it says Barton. Um, but I guess that's basically a green space, because that's one of the things that, that the, the school themselves, the staff, were interested in having some green space on the property, um, available to them, uh, courtyards, things like that, outdoor areas. So they were incorporating that into their larger, uh, for, uh, footprint design. So they are still working on this, refining it, and they plan to have, uh, it even further detailed with a, with a more, uh, accurate and detailed report, um, hopefully by next week, so that we have that information to take into our, to our joint work session. Um, but this is something I asked for, just because I want to give you an update where we're at, because it's important, I think, every month to let you know what's going on with, with this work. So I, I'm more available for any questions you might have.
Is there opportunity for expansion?
Yes.
On this program?
Yes, there is, right here at the top, you can see there's, uh, there's a good wing right here called, uh, uh, NNDCC Training Future Growth. Uh, there's also a future growth wing up here in the, in the far left-hand corner. So that's some additional square footage as well that we can add into that. And then there's also flexible spaces built into the program that, that Jason and, and Mark and, and Christian put into the program as well, that, that may not be defined as a, as a class right now, but it is defined as, as flexible space. And, and that, that goes for both his designs, the concept one and concept two here. He has, but, but, um, additional future growth and the flexible spaces. So we know we're looking for somewhere between twenty-one to thirty-two acres to be able to meet our needs for a Burton right now.
Between what?
For twenty-one to thirty-two acres is what we're looking for.
Twenty-one to thirty-two?
Yes, sir. Obviously, the more acreage, acreage you go, the more open space you can have, the more sprawling your building can be. Any other questions?
Let me ask you a question, can you go back to the, the previous one?
Yes, sir.
The space where you have second floor.
Right here? Oops. It's right here, yes, sir.
Yeah. Um, in the second design, all of that appears to be on the right-hand side where that leg of the building is a little longer than the other. So you've got, like, nursing and health sciences down, downstairs, but all those others that you have there on the first floor and the second floor seem to be down that, that right-hand side on the second one, right?
I, I, I imagine so, I didn't get into the, it looks like it, it looks pretty, pretty close to that, yes, sir. It looks like you're taking the second floor on the, from the first drawing and you're adding that wing on the, on, on, on the second drawing.
Okay.
It does look like you're, you're doing that. And that looks like it's, let's see, this, this drawing here is a double, I, I received this drawing about four o'clock this, or, uh, three o'clock this afternoon, so. I'm, I'm, I'm seeing it for the first time as well. But this is a double-loaded hallway all the way around, so you have places on the inside and outside.
Okay, okay.
Mm-hmm, but, but it looks like everything has, uh, glass, so you'll, you'll have natural sunlight in the entire footprint.
Mm-hmm. Did he give any indication as far as, I know he knows the square footage, but is, um, is that?
Did you wanna go back to that?
Trying to get the size of the, the footprint of the building?
Yep.
You know, I mean.
He has some, he has some measurements here, um, so.
Just trying to compare the two to, just kinda getting my mind the diff, you know?
Okay, so with the, with this, uh, loaded hallway here, that looks like it's, that hallway plus the classrooms right there are about a hundred and thirty-eight feet wide.
Okay.
And I, I, I think, let me see if he has those measurements on this one. Um, I don't see measurements on, on this one, so to speak. This one looks like they're, uh, not quite as far on, along as the other one was.
What, what is, one is observation, of course, we're, we're seeing this for the first time. One thing I wa- I wanna make sure we check, and I was gonna say this for the good of the group, is that multipurpose area in terms of the, the square footage we're allowing for that, because what we're envisioning for that is it could be a smaller performance space. Uh, not an auditorium, like with fixed seating, but, you know, flexible seating, but it could be for performances as well as either training or anything else like that. We, we, we could use it at the school or school district, so. In that one concept, where it's our first floor, that's one thing I'd wanna check, is make sure that we're allowing adequate square footage for that.
Sure.
We'll, we'll follow up, I just wanna say that aloud for the group.
Yes, sir, we can do that.
It looks like you have several multi, uh, multipurpose spaces there. Well, you've got one there on that second floor, two beside the, whatever that is, the third one over on the top from the left.
Oh, you know what, that might be an indication that that's two-story.
It could be.
You see how it's kinda lined up, maybe that's what it is.
Oh, yes, it is, it looks multipurpose, so that would be, it looks like, uh, probably an open ceiling all the way to the second floor there, so it's probably like a twenty-two-foot ceiling in there going from first to second. That's why, that's why it looks like it's lining up. Again, this is just a concept, you know.
Sure.
So. The, 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 the ideal goal here is to figure out what our acres, we needed for our footprint, and I think this is a great indicator of that, and we can get some more detail on that in next week. Is there any other questions on that one? Good? Okay.
All right, don't go anywhere.
No.
We'll jump right into four point oh six, solar-powered energy schools discussion.
Okay, so Dr. Nice, this is just a discussion, just to let you know what we found out on our trip, uh, to, uh, Myrtle Beach. Um, Dr. Nice line went down last Sunday evening and came back Monday evening.
We did not see a beach.
We did not see a beach. Didn't see a good restaurant. We were there and back, yep. So, we went to a, a school that was a middle school, twelve hundred, uh, students. And so it, their middle school is as big as our high school. Uh, it's, it's, it's a hundred and seventy thousand square feet, so it's about the same size as K Spring High School, twelve hundred students. Um, so some of the things we learned, um, they have a, a different, um, their schools were beautiful. Um, hospitality was fantastic, uh, uh, I mean, it was, it was, they were great to us. Uh, they have a little different concept to how they do things, uh, in, in their school system, for instance, just, you know, just architecturally on the, on the buildings. All their class, you could think of this, these schools as rectangles with all the classrooms being on the outer wall. Anything that was in the middle was cafeteria, gymnasium, multipurpose rooms, pull-out areas, um, things, things of that nature. Interior of the building was completely carpeted, classrooms, hallways, everything. So it's just a different little concept. Um, their interior, you know, they had their outdoor walls that had obviously glass to allow natural light into all the classrooms. And then there, there were single-loaded hallways, so the classrooms, if you're walking down the hallway and the classroom is on your right, all the classroom walls in the hallway are glass, um, with the exception of where the, the walls between classrooms come in.
Which per our early discussions, could pose a safety issue.
Well, that was the first thing we thought. But we, we.
It's 'cause you guys are thinking right.
Right, that, that, that's what we're thinking. But I think a lot of it has to do with, um, trying to reduce the amount of energy they're using in the facility with their HVAC units. So all that natural light coming through those windows in the classrooms come also through those windows in the hallways, leaving more light and energy and, and things like that in their, their centerpiece spaces, their gymnasiums, their cafeterias, allowing natural light into those areas. Um, so that was something, something a little bit different. Something else they told us, um, was that, uh, obviously, energy companies, uh, buy their minimal on their utilities back down there. For instance, the utility company will sell their stuff at eight cents a kilowatt hour, but they buy it back from the school at three cents a kilowatt hour.
It's a nice spread.
Something, it's, 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 it's very interesting, and, and I, I'll be honest, I don't know what AEP's policy is yet, because I don't think that policy's a hundred percent established on buyback versus sell, because right now I don't even believe they're, they're buying back energy, uh, in this, in this region right now. I believe they are up along the coast in the, in the Duke, was it the Dominion, Dominion Energy in Virginia. They had, I think they had Duke Energy down in North Carolina. So, interesting, that, that school that has, I found out they have two thousand solar panels on, on this school, okay? Fifty percent of those solar panels direct energy directly back to the utility company. Utility company takes what energy they're getting in and gives a credit back to the school for their billing. The other fifty percent is actually filtered to the school into their power grid at the school and is used directly. They don't do storage, they're not, you're not allowed to have battery storage in the state of North Carolina. So if there are cloudy day, they're using their utility company's power. If it's a non-c cloudy day and it's nice and sunny, they're using direct energy uses from, from the school or from the sun.
Total?
I'm sorry?
Total energy there is.
Yeah, for the, for, yeah, they, I, I, I believe that, that would be fair to say on a good day, they're using total energy from, from that. And then plus they're getting their credits back on the fifty percent that's going to the energy company at the same time. So that was interesting, that there's no storage, it's all, it's all, it's all direct. Um, solar panels and roof replacement, twenty years. You have, you, when you replace the solar panels, you have to replace the roof, that's, that is twenty years from there. I'm just going down my list of notes from while we were there, so.
The cost of those.
Excuse me?
The cost on the solar.
Well, I, I, I will tell you, it's a million dollars. For that school, it was a million dollars for the solar.
For the panels.
For two thousand panels.
For two thousand panels. And, and that was something, I did some research, they, they didn't have that information for us, but I was able to do some research and, through, through Google, of course, and, and we were able to find those costs. So, so it's a million for the panels up front for that school. And then they also had a geothermal field there as part of their energy savings. For a high school that big, it's roughly anywhere from seven hundred and fifty thousand to a million dollars. And then you have to replace the roof and the solar panels in twenty years, so maybe one point three million dollars in twenty years. And so you take those numbers and they're trying to create enough energy to get a payback on that within forty years, okay? So.
Holy cow.
Well, this is an interesting stat. Yeah, this, this, this is an interesting, and they take all that into consideration on their pipe, you know, the, the roof replacement and all that, that, that's all taken into consideration for their payback. But just an interesting note for that region, that they told us that basically, if you were to count all the time that they're collecting positive energy, it equals out to about seven months a year, okay? So, you know, it was, that was, yes, seven months a year. So in Myrtle Beach, they're getting about seven months a year of, of energy from the sun. I, I found that very interesting when we're in a completely different climate here. And I, so I've reached out to a solar company to just kinda find out what we'd be looking at in, in the Roanoke region, but it would, as you would assume, that it would be less than that seven months in this area, especially when we deal with ice and snow and things of that nature.
And, and Chris, to expand on that too, um, they're not storing energy.
That's correct.
As you said, and are we, is it, is it too much of a safety risk for us to store energy with the batteries? Is that why they're not doing it, or was it cost?
Yes, it's considered an explosive device, actually, on a school campus, so that's why they do not do it there.
Okay.
And I'm assuming we probably have some sort of, I, I don't know the building code here, but I'm assuming there's some kind of building code here about storage of, of batteries like that as well.
And, and, yeah, that would be good to know too, for, I mean, because is there a proximity within the building? I know it's expensive to run, I guess, the transmission lines from where your battery backup to the, to the actual building, but, you know, is there, I mean, is it on campus, is it five hundred feet away from campus or from the main school building, is it a thousand? Those are the interesting things to.
Sure.
Things to know, because, I mean, it does, in my mind, one of the great benefits of solar, you know, is not only, you know, using, I mean, using the sun for immediate, uh, power, but, I mean, you've got the benefit of being able to store that energy. If you can't store it, that, you know, takes away one of the benefits. Mr. Weimer.
Chris.
Yes, sir.
Uh, did I understand you that the payback was in forty years?
Forty.
Forty.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so I guess my question is, how long have they been doing this?
Five, four or five years, yeah, I think that they're, they're just coming up on.
And they're assuming that nothing's gonna change with the power company over the next thirty-five years in terms of honoring that agreement or adjusting that agreement or any of those kind of things, which would, which would impact the payback.
Sure, well, can, can, I, I'm gonna go take a right turn and talk about the payback real quick, just something that they learned in this process, because obviously, they're, they're kind of the pioneers on this, right? I mean, you know, there, not a whole lot of people have done this. So when they did it, their ar- the, their architect engineer gave them a program, um, uh, of the school, operating times, temperatures of their classrooms, all of this went into how they created their payback period, okay? So right in the beginning, like, the school would come up at seven o'clock, it would start air conditioning their schools at seven AM. Um, you know, and, so you're in school at eight, are your rooms at temperature yet. One of the other things that was kind of a, an, I don't wanna say, I don't wanna say anything was a negative to them, but something that they had to deal with, was they let their rooms drift, they call it drift, from, uh, up to seventy-four, seventy-five, maybe seventy-six degrees before their HVAC systems would start bringing those temperatures down. So what do you get then? And what did they get? They got a lot of complaints from their staff, their teachers, their administrators, things like that. So the first thing they do is they go in and start bringing their set points down, okay? So your AC's running more now, so now you're using more energy than what you initially thought on your payback. Also, they're starting their systems up earlier than, than seven o'clock, for instance, they might be starting their systems at six. That's different than the numbers they utilize to get their payback. One of the other things they did was their schools were considered to be shut down at six PM. I think we all know that this is just not the, not the case. So that, when their schools stayed open until seven, eight, eight-thirty, nine o'clock, that affected their payback. So they realized that going into it, it would have been, they would, they needed to be, we would need to be really detailed and accurate on what our operating usage of the buildings are realistically, so that they can design that your solar field to meet that payback that you're looking for. And you can design the solar field to meet any payback, forty years, thirty years, twenty years. What they do down there is if they're trying to meet a certain payback, if they run out of roof space, they create a solar field somewhere on their property. Okay, so they've actually ground-mounted solar panels on their, on some of their fields. So I think that's interesting going into, into something like that, if, if we were ever to decide to do that, is just keep eyes wide open. We need really accurate operating procedures for the building in order to get our payback.
I'm assuming your point with that is that the payback becomes longer?
Yes, when you're starting to use more, more energy, when you're starting to use your, your systems a lot longer through the day, or starting up or, or running them more often during the day, sure, your payback i- it gets, gets pushed out further, it does.
That's right. Uh, is there a difference between like that, you know, area, having more days that would have sun? Is there an intensity of the sun have any, any difference on the solar panels, or is it just the sun's out there?
I, I, I think there is a, there is something about direct sunlight hitting those panels, because they, they were telling us about how they had to remove a row, because a penthouse they had up on their roof was providing shade through some of the day, and the solar panels were just useless, they weren't getting the sun that they needed to, to, to warrant them being up there. So they would, they removed an entire row of solar panels, for instance. So cloud cover does make a difference, uh, shadows make a difference, uh, being down in a mountainous, mountainous area where you may not get as much direct light. I mean, I think all those things have to be considered when you're, when we can talk about, uh, solar power schools.
So does that go have, um, a plan or a program for solar, uh, energy used by, or the whole concept of a solar school, how they could work with or service that?
I don't know that for sure. I know that right now there is a cap on how many, uh, credits they can give out per year. And that is something that, from my understanding, is in the, the next infrastructure bill to eliminate a lot of those caps, so that more people can take advantage of them. So that is some, um, research that, where I need to re- talk out to a, to a solar company in this region who's doing that work with schools, and we're trying to, to get something together right here in the, in late August, early September, when there's some free time to do that. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep, uh, uh, going through, a couple of things they, 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 um, they, they had to add to the procedures was a maintenance plan. They had to sub out their maintenance work for the solar panel work. Every, was it five? Every five panels required an electrical inverter. So their staff, their maintenance staff didn't have the experience, or, and, and there wasn't enough training provided for them to do that, so they actually subcontracted that work out on a yearly basis. They also subcontracted the cleaning of all those solar panels out on a yearly basis, because they get issues there with, you know, uh, leaves, dirt, grime, you know, you know, uh, smog. And as the solar panels get dirty, they, they, they don't become as useful. They also begin to denigrate after year five or so, and they will denigrate all the way up to year twenty. So you're actually u- losing some of, of the, um, solar.
Capture ability.
Yeah, the capture or whatever from year five to year twenty. But they did say that that was included as part of their payback process, they, they take that into effect.
One, one other thing on that same front that they said that they don't have to worry about, that, that we would, is, goes back to the snow and ice thing.
Yes.
You know, we get more, obviously, more snow and ice up here, if we were to have those, we'd have to have crews up there cleaning that off, of course, you know, in the proper way, you know, during those events, I mean, obviously, that's not something we have to worry about.
Right, and, 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 and that you do have to clean off the snow and ice for them to be operational. If there's snow and ice on them, uh, it, it, uh, you know, a freeze in the morning, you're not gonna, you know, if you have that, that sleet on there in the morning, uh, they're not going to get full usage. So that's something that we, they told us we would need to look at. Um, as for HVAC units and things like that, it's basically, they, they use the same stuff that we use in all of our standard buildings and traditional buildings. They, they use chill water heat pumps, um, they use VAVs. So basically, you're using the same type of HVAC systems that we are doing in our buildings. It's just getting the energy from, instead of off the power grid, it's getting it from, from the sun, uh, seventy percent of the time, it seems like.
Do they, do you know if they really had to provide much in the way of heat?
That's a good question. Um, did we discuss heat? I think we discussed air more than heat, because we had talked about air going, they have vents in all their concrete floors that helps cool the floors, which helps radiate cool, coolness, but that.
Which is why you couldn't use, which is why they had to use carpet and couldn't use the traditional.
Because you would get condensation, they were afraid about the condensation on the VCT, that's correct.
And, and, and obviously, it's a different climate than ours, they probably, I mean, you know, it does get chilly down there, but I'm sure they're not relying on it.
They're probably not running their heat pumps. Now, again, most of the heat, they did tell us was gas. Most of their, their heat was gas-operated, so there's still an electrical component to it, but as for electric boilers, things like that, they were not running those, they were running gas.
Because you and I have talked about this before, but, you know, a lot of our schools, you know, you're running heat or you're running, uh, cooling. We don't have two-pipe systems, which means that during the day, you know, if, if you need heat, you got it. But if you don't need heat, you got it. And the same thing with, with air conditioning, you know, teachers tell us all the time, you know, about rooms that are too hot or too cold, it's because the system isn't designed to allow you that flexibility to control the temperatures, so that would be, that would be a concern.
Sure. And one of the other things that they didn't take in considera- consideration and warned us that we need to be sure we address is that you have to have an insurance policy for all your solar panels and, and inverters for the, for that system. So that, that's a, a policy that would be added to that, to that school for, for those, um, capital, uh, needs. Um, the school usage is important in the design, I talked about that. Um, zones, uh, one of the things with the solar is they always zone the, the buildings, the bigger buildings, like a high school and a middle school in their case, they're only zoned in three zones, uh, becau- for the heating and cooling because of that solar usage. So right now, we have the capability, most places, to go in and say, we want to, uh, run heat or air in the gym for this night. Well, in there, they not only running heat and, or air for that gym, but they're, for, they're, they're running it for a third of the school. Okay? And on the elementary levels, it's two, two zones, half the school's on one zone, half the school's on the other. So if we are having those night things and, and, and weekend things, you're running a little bit more energy in those off-times than what we do normally now.
So just, yeah, I'm sorry for putting you on the spot.
You're fine.
Let's take Cave Spring, for instance. How many ballpark, how many zones do we currently have at Case, in Cave Spring?
I wanna say eighteen or twenty.
Compared to three?
Yes.
I mean, in my, I mean, so obviously, that gets rid of a lot of the efficiency.
Yes.
Too, and, I mean, man, that's huge, eighteen zones to three zones?
It, it, it is a big difference.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, but wouldn't eighteen be better than three?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah. That's what we have right now, so that in that.
Cause you can isolate the area you use.
You know, if you have a, if you have performance in the auditorium, you can turn the, you know.
I know, we did the tour, that, as we were going through the science department in particular, that, uh, you know, they had those, uh, thermostats on the wall, and, you know, the question was, does that control your room? No, it controls my room and the one over here. But still, that's better than, you know, controlling, you know, everything from this side of the building, you know, back to the.
Everyone's hot.
Yeah.
So, um, they, back in two thousand sixteen, said, they opened in seventeen, so their, their construction cost was about three hundred and fifteen dollars a square foot back, uh, five years ago for, for, for these schools, so I think that's interesting. And the only other interesting thing that, um, well, I mean, there's a whole lot of interesting things, but something they told us is that, um, if they would have done that school traditionally without the, uh, the, the solar energy, it would have been a hundred and seventy, that, or a hundred and fifty thousand square foot school instead of a hundred and seventy thousand square foot. All that twenty thousand square feet, it, it, I know, Jason looked at me like I'm crazy, but basically, it's because you have single-loaded hallways throughout the entire facility, you don't have classrooms on your right and left, so there is some, a lot of additional space in order to get all the classrooms on the outside wall.
My, you know, my takeaway, and, and certainly, we were grateful for the visit and learned a lot, so it was definitely worthwhile. Um, you know, someone asked, well, does that mean you're anti-solar? Absolutely not, I mean, there's probably some really good reasons to do solar. Um, but, uh, in terms of, you know, our desire to look at, um, alternative ways to do things in order to increase our financing ability to, to accelerate our timelines on this, solar in and of itself, you know, one of our takeaways was, was not something that was gonna help us in that regard. Um, you know, other pieces of, and they didn't do this. You know, other pieces of, and they didn't do this in South Carolina, they really, they had plenty of upfront financing. Because they also passed the sales tax referendum, you know, down there to, to help finance, you know, construction and so forth. So they have that. They cannot do the public-private partnerships or the leasing kind of options. So, so again, you know, that was not at all part of that equation. So we didn't learn anything there that would help us with, you know, what our objectives are. There, there is, there is another site in North Carolina in which they did do the leasing parts. We're gonna try to learn more about that aspect of it. But this was just focused on the solar, you know, energy in and of itself. And the takeaway was that in isolation, you actually have more upfront costs and, you know, lots of question marks around that. It, it didn't really do anything to help us as far as, you know, our financing options that we're looking for.
Calendar wise, or were they on a similar schedule to ours? Were they middle of August to the middle of May, end of May?
It's, it did sound like it. I think they were about two weeks from starting school when we were there. So that, yeah, they're starting school about the same time we are. Yes, sir.
Solar wise, you're obviously probably gonna get your most benefit June and July, longest days of the year.
Well, and, and they're storing, you know, or not storing, but they're, you know, they're getting that fifty percent of the, of, of that energy's rolling back to the power company at that time.
Even when they're not in school.
Right, right, and when they're not in school, that's correct. And not using it during the summer, you know, very much. So, you know, their usage is down. One of the things they did tell us, and I, I don't know what AEP does, but the power company down there. When you, when, when they click, say, just in common layman's terms, they click over from solar to the power company. There's a demand charge upfront through the power companies. It's kind of one of the ways they, they're, they're, they're.
They're getting you.
Yes, there you go. You said it, Ms. Marest, not me.
I mean, yeah, I mean, they're losing money when we're using.
So it's really a lot about, about your power company in your area and what they're gonna do for you, you know, what your payback could be.
Right.
I mean, you're looking at eight versus three cents a kilo on our rest. If it's more, then your payback can be better, but.
I, look, I'm very appreciative of you guys taking your time to go down there.
Learned a lot.
I mean, and, and it really sounds like, and I appreciate the, the, you know, the information. I mean, I'm all for, I'm all for solar, you know, but I'm also, you know, we have an obligation to be, you know, physically responsible to our taxpayers too. So, you know, if money was no object, I'd say let's do solar if it's gonna help, you know, reduce our needs, you know, for relying on fossil fuels. But at the, at the same time, I think it's gonna be hard to, to justify if we don't have a, a decent payback period. I mean, yeah, right, exactly. You know, if we're talking forty years, you know, we're spending a million, you know, including the roof, a million three in year one, and then twenty years later, another one point three, and then twenty years later. So, but I know that you, I know you have a lot more research you're doing with as far as, you know, how our local power companies work, what.
Trying to learn it.
Yeah, I mean, what, 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 whether it's grants, what type of funding might be available to pursue it. And, you know, I don't, I don't think our work is done there, but, you know, it certainly, certainly sheds a little bit more light on at least our original goal of, of this whole exercise was, is there a way that we can reduce our upfront construction cost? And, you know, I don't wanna, you know, toss it away completely, but it, it does sound like that that is.
Right now.
Right now, it, it, it's, it's not gonna happen.
Yeah, and, and, and we don't know what the, the, the next, the policies that come out from the federal government and, and the state government. But there might be some, some, you know, incentives, you know, here in the near future, but right now, I, I, I'm not aware of, of all that.
Especially if you can't store the energy.
Yeah, that's, that was, that was one of those interesting things. It's just direct usage. That, that surprised me. It was hot on that roof. Did you agree? It was hot.
Alright, when you, when you talked about the cost, construction cost, about three fifteen per square foot. Not looking at any particular school in Roanoke County, but what's, what's the general cost that we have for a facility that's?
Well, we, we were at two hundred dollars a square foot roughly for one ninety, one ninety-nine, one ninety-eight for Cave Spring High School. And the original Byrd project was about two hundred and, the, the original price back in last October is about two hundred and two, two hundred and three dollars a square foot. But with the increase in the construction, there, there, those next eight months, it went to two sixty-five, I believe. So, you know, it, before lumber and everything has started coming back down just, just a little bit. We were probably peaking right around two sixty-five, two seventy in this area.
If we're gonna compare apples to apples though, what was, I mean, two thousand sixteen was Glenver High School construction. What, what was that? They were at three fifteen in, back in two thousand sixteen. What were we in?
I think they were, I think they were in the one seventies, Glenver was, I believe. One seventy-five, something like that.
Less than three fifteen for a whole lot less. And, and the thing about Glenver is we, we upgraded some of those systems like the geothermal.
We did.
Which was a more expensive, you know, than going other routes. But in the long term, the payoff, you know, is, is generous. So, you know. So the, you know, the, the idea that there's a, a payback is nice, but forty years. When, when, when two of those, you, twice you're gonna have to replace a system. That's, that's risky.
You also don't know what technologies are.
You know, that's a, cause you, you had mentioned this when we had lunch last week with Jason Peters and Dan O'Donnell. You know, we've got the geothermal at Glenver and, and in just a matter of five to six year span. The technology when it comes to HVAC system, specifically what we put into Cave Spring. I mean, you were, you had mentioned, you know, the cost of those systems, you know, in the long run are much more efficient. So, I mean, it almost makes, you know, is geothermal even worth really pursuing anymore?
Right, we're any, any, right, right now, good building envelopes and, and high, highly efficient HVAC systems. Or your payback on getting that stuff is right now equivalent to what a geothermal field is. And that's why the studies, while we didn't do geothermal at Cave Spring High School. Plus, plus the Cave Spring High School region, there, there was, there's issues with putting wells over that area as well. I mean, it had a lot to do with it. This area is filled with caverns and, as we know from Green Valley.
We, we didn't do too well at Green Valley.
No, we did not. We did not.
Do we do, do they still go by, do they still go by the sear?
Yeah, that, that's part of it, yes, sir. That, that's part of it. But again, you don't know what their technology twenty years from now. I think where we were twenty years ago to, to now, and, and so it's.
Off the top of your head, any idea what we, you know, let's, let, you know, let's take our high school, what we're, what our energy costs are?
You want me to give you an elementary school?
Yeah.
Okay, since we're looking at elementary schools?
Yes.
Okay, so, so a, a, an average bill from one of our average elementary schools runs about three thousand dollars a month.
Okay.
So thirty-six thousand dollars a year. And then for an elementary school, we'd probably be looking at a one and a half million dollar investment for geothermal, solar, and then a replacement of, of the solar in twenty years. And so if you do that math, it's roughly forty years.
No, I mean, that's great. I mean, that's information we needed out.
Yeah, and, and, you know, that's, that's off the cuff, us scratching it out on paper in the office, but we, we felt like it was important to start looking that up. And I'll let you know as well, what was something else we're looking at, and maybe next time we talk about something like this, is we're, we're right now evaluating Cave Spring. What their energy costs were back in two thousand eighteen in the, in the, in, in January through April of two thousand eighteen and September through November of two thousand eighteen. And we're gonna compare that with what we did in twenty and, and twenty-one. And see how our higher energy efficient VRF units and our building envelope compares, even with additional twenty thousand square feet of, of building. So we're hoping to see what kind of comparisons we have on those. We're waiting for those older, older invoices from AEP to, to look at.
It's kind of like the, the square footage cost, you know, with energy. You can compare kilowatts used, but price wise, you're, you're really comparing apples and oranges. Because even in your homes over the past two years, did you not get an increase? You know, you're pro, you'd be probably using about the same number of kilowatts, but you may be paying more for that kilowatt. So it's kind of comparing, kilowatts might be more effective than.
Yeah, and it, it's, we're getting the kilowatts and the price, and it's, kilowatts is part of it, so, yes, sir. Alright, anything else?
No, thank you for that information. Alright, four point oh seven, high school game field maintenance info.
Okay, so we have talked about, whoops, there we go. So we, we, we've been talking, with the last, the last meeting, we talked about our game fields in Roanoke County and how they're being maintained and kind of, what can we do to make sure that they're safe and playable? And after that meeting, I met with Mr. Linden and, and the folks out at Northside about their baseball field. And, and they have a situation out there on that baseball field. So then at that time, we, we, we're like, we're gonna talk to all the schools about all their baseball fields and all their softball fields. And kind of come up with a summary of what's going on in all those fields. What do those coaches and ADs feel like they need at those fields? What do they want at those fields? Because right now, the overwhelming majority of them feel like that they're just overwhelmed with trying to maintain their fields. And they're not able to do it properly with the funding that they have. So one of the things we want to look at is, is what can we do as a operations maintenance department to, to help them? And like we are at Northside for their game field. So we're spending about thirty thousand dollars a year to mow that field three times a week supposedly all the time. They're also vertical cutting it once a year. They're aerating it twice a year. They're dropping about seven thousand pounds of sand on it a, a year. And so that, that's what our thirty thousand dollars of that field, and it's, it's a great playing surface. So we want to look at the other fields and kind of evaluate them and give them a fair, poor, or good, or great rating. And talk to the coaches and ADs and see if they were happy with what their fields are like. So for instance, we went to Northside High School and, you know, their football field, you know, this, this is Jill and I going through this. And, you know, it's currently a Bermuda field. It's good to great condition. Now, they're really satisfied with their Bermuda over there, especially if we maintain the current maintenance plan we have in place. And they wouldn't, they wouldn't balk if turf became an available option, but they're not asking for it. It's, they, they feel like they're, they're, they're really satisfied with their Bermuda. The maintenance on that field, what we do is what I just said. We do yearly aeration, overseeding, fertilization, top dressing, vertical cutting and mowing. And then only thing they've requested for assistance on was to continue with the current maintenance plan through the operations department, which we're doing. And to fix their, their, their irrigation. They're having some irrigation issues out there. So that, that's just a maintenance issue. We can go out and fix that and take care of it and get, get that on board. So obviously, all the high schools on their football stadiums, the other high schools all have turf, so they don't have any issues. They have minimal maintenance, that, that, they don't, they're, they're happy, obviously. So we, I went to what we talked about soccer, and let's see, these are in alphabetical order, so you can't see it across. But Cave Springs first, Hidden Valley, Northside, is that right? Glenver, Northside, and then Byrd. Okay, so for instance, at Cave Spring, they have Bermuda up on their soccer field. It's been there for two years. They like their Bermuda. They want to keep it. Right now, their boosters are, are taking care of that field with yearly aeration, some overseeding. We take care of the fertilization. They are actually doing top dressing every year on their own. And they're mowing it through, through the staff and the coaches and boosters. They did say they would gladly accept the yearly aeration, overseeding and fertilization and the top dressing from the maintenance department. But they want to maintain the mowing. They want to keep mowing it because they have it on a schedule and they like the mowing. They would like a real mower though. They're using a regular rotary mower on that Bermuda up there. So it's probably about an inch and a quarter high. You want it to be three quarters of an inch and a half, but it's not hurting it right now. And it's very playable surface and it looks really, really good. Alright, for, you know, Hidden Valley High School, for instance, the one we talked about last time, they have cool grass over there. And right now it's in fair, poor condition. They prefer a Bermuda surface. Right now, the only maintenance that's going on out there really is mowing and irrigation. And so they're requesting that assistance for yearly aeration, vertical cutting, top dressing and mowing. So that would be an equivalent cost for Northside's football field, for instance. It's about the same acreage, same square footage. So we're talking about thirty thousand dollars a year to, to, to do that. Obviously, Glenver uses, has turf for their soccer field, so they're, they're fine. William Byrd, no, I'm sorry, the next one's Northside. So they're using the Bermuda, so they're good out there. And Byrd uses turf, so they're good on their soccer fields. Baseball, now this, this is the interesting one. For instance, I'll, I'll just, we talk about Northside real quick. We went out there and looked at that field and the field's rough. It's, it's, it's in rough shape. You have a huge lip from the infield to the outfield. There's a drop from the infield to the outfield. Kids are, have actually tripped trying to catch fly balls, things like that. And it's, and, and, you know, it really is just, it's been getting minimal maintenance all these years. You know, they worked their tails off to rake out their infield and to mow and things like that. But all the other things get kind of ignored because it costs money and time, and it's just, the coaches and boosters and, and, and the ADs have so much time. So that field hasn't been aerated in forever, you know? So, so you got a hard surface now with clumpy grass coming up, which provide trip hazards in their outer field. Plus, you've got thirty years of erosion through the field where it hasn't been regraded or resurfaced or anything like that. So we, we, we rated that field fair to poor right now on the baseball field out there at, at Northside. Now, we did talk about, and the only reason this came up is because Northside coaches went out and got cost estimates to put, to put turf on their infield and off their outfield.
Artificial turf?
Artificial turf. So they got.
Everywhere except the baselines, right?
Everywhere from behind, take it out to third base, third base and first base, and you can go, I don't know, fifteen feet behind the bases.
Look like a major league field, how there's.
Except for the outfield. The, the outfield would, would remain grass.
But my question again is, is, you know, the whole infield would be artificial turf, even the baselines?
Yes.
Even the, okay.
And the, and the foul territory.
Yeah, and the foul territory. And you can, you can tweak it, how do you prefer, you, you prefer it. I mean, if you want to have dirt at bases, you could do that. If you want dirt on the pitcher's mound, you could do that, dirt at home plate. I mean, they, they customize those anyway. But you're looking at, I'm, I'm just giving you a, a, his quote is not exactly this, but you're looking at a quarter million dollars, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do that for a baseball field. And the turf is expected to last about fifteen, a minimum of fifteen years.
Is that, I mean, that, that's turnkey. I mean, obviously we gotta get it graded. We've gotta take care of drainage. I mean, not gonna spend all that money on turf if, I mean, if it's not.
Right, that is turnkey.
And that's inside the fence out.
Yes, yes, sir.
Basically, to, to your point, that's inside the fence out.
Yes, sir. It, it is. So of course, you know, wanting to be equitable, go to all the schools and, 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 and ask them. And, and they all have cool grass fields. Some of them, for instance, Cave Spring's baseball field is, 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 or no, I'm sorry, is fair. John talked to me about, you know, they would love to do a Bermuda field. They do not want to have anything to do with turf on their baseball field. They, right now, their boosters and clubs, they're doing the yearly aeration, overseeding, fertilization, things like that. They would love for us to take over that part of it, but they want to maintain the mowing. At Hidden Valley, their, their baseball field, I mean, it looks great. It's, we'll say good to fair. They would love to have the infield turf because they feel like more that they, they could take their coaches from working on those field twenty hours a week or whatever. They feel like they'd be able to attract more coaches to stay longer if they didn't have to do all that maintenance. So that is their reason for saying they would prefer an, a, a, a turf infield. They are going mowing and irrigation, and they would love for us to take over the, the other stuff, but not the mowing. They, they would, they, now they did say, we would love for you to mow in the off season. That, you know, we'll mow it from February to, to May, but we want you to take over from June to January. So, so I, I added that in, into this chart, you know, that, that's, that's a fair question. Glenver, for instance, their baseball field was in good to fair condition as well, much like Cave Springs. They, Corey called me right before this meeting and said that, that they would, would love that theirs to be infield as well, because for the same reasons. They'd be able to keep coaches longer. They'd be able to attract more coaches. So much time involved in it. Yeah, yes, sir. Yes, he didn't call me back until after I got this in.
There's one other thing there too, and that is down the right field line, where there's a short bank there, you know, the short distance between the bank and the field.
You have a spring back there.
In the spring, it is a pond. You know, somewhere along the line, I don't know whether French drain would do it, or whether they'd have to come in there and really get into that bank to, to fix it.
I would think a reasonable French drain, because we had talked about that a while back. I think a reasonable French drain would probably solve that problem.
Yeah.
But at least it, it, that's a first attempt.
Home field advantage.
Yeah, don't, don't, you know, get those left-handers to put it in the right field.
So I, I also talked to Jason out at William Byrd, and he was on board as well. I mean, their, their field looks, looks really nice, but it, it, they do have some issues out there. They need some, some, some maintenance and things like that. I think, I think they're.
Two, two quick things. One, the net has failed.
Yeah, we know.
Did they tell you about?
We know, yeah, the straps.
Yeah, so the net, net's down. And I've already told Dr. Nice, and you know about it, obviously. So our, our folks take care of that baseball field.
Yes, sir.
And we need eight thousand dollars for that to get a tractor so they can continue to maintain that field, right?
That, that's the machine that they had was, it's about an eight thousand dollar machine, but, you know.
And it's sixteen years old.
Yeah.
So, yeah, alright.
I'm gonna get back into this real quick. Before I get into that.
My point is, we're saving about thirty a year, and we're asking for the eight thousand so they can work the field.
That, that's, that's true. Jason did say they would love to have the infield turf because he, I guess his entire coaching staff has, has resigned. And they just, he felt like that part of that reason was because of all the time they had to spend on that field doing, doing that. Part of that reason was because of all the time they had to spend on that field doing, doing that. And he feels like he's having a lot of trouble getting someone else to take that job. Because the field work is, is, is part of the job. And so, um, he felt like that was an issue. And so on the softball fields, listen, really we have some beautiful softball fields. Um, let's see here, there we go. John is, is, is great with what he has out there at, at K Spring. He doesn't want anybody to touch it. He said he would accept though, the yearly aeration and, and, and that stuff. But they'll take care of the mowing. I, I mean, that's the general stuff, the once or twice a year things that they're asking for us to take care of for them. Cause they just don't have the funding to do it.
Right.
Um, so that's the same way.
Having this discussion to begin with.
Yeah, that's, that's right. And so it, it is the same situation at Hidden Valley High School. Um, he did say that, um, he would love to have turf on their softball field. Kind of like Christiansburg has on their softball field, um, just because it would take the whole mowing and irrigation and all that maintenance out of it. Um, for, for their coaches and, and boosters. Uh, same thing from Corey at Glenver High School, even though it's not on this chart right now. Let's see, what, uh, that was Northside, um, softball. Uh, obviously that's really good condition out there because well. Parks and Rec candles, those, those fields. So we really don't have anything to do with those. They, they take care of the mowing and the yearly aeration and all that. We do have some issues with them picking up after themselves, trash and things like that, but we're working through those issues. And then William Bird, again, Jason was the same as, uh, John and, uh, Mr. Deeds on, on, yeah, he would love to have turf. Uh, out there at softball, just to eliminate the maintenance part of it.
Is that pretty much chea- that's cheaper than what a baseball field would be? Do you have a price?
I do not have a number on that one though. So I didn't want, I didn't want anyone to estimate. Um, but I, I would assume on a softball field, you would look at turfing the entire field if you were to do it. Just because, you know, you, you, you're, you're running your turf already to seventy-five or eighty feet, you know, because you want to go behind the third base and the first base. You only have another hundred feet to the fence. Whereas in baseball, you have, uh, you know, you're going ninety feet. Yeah, you're going to three hundred and twenty-five feet. You, you got two hundred some feet to go. So it's, it's a big difference in the cost, you know? So you, you might get, you might get the whole softball field for, for, you know, just, just above what a, uh, infield would cost at a baseball stadium. That, that's a, that's just an estimate. I don't know that for a fact because I, I haven't gotten this pricing yet.
Let me, let me just be clear. We don't have any turf, baseball or softball complexes at this point.
No, sir, we do not.
Okay.
Everything right now is cool grass, um, fields.
Okay.
So that's where we're at. When we get into the budget season, um, I will prepare budgets for yearly maintenance of these fields for this. Obviously if you were to do something like, uh, turf, something that would be a C I P, that would be a C I P project, I'm assuming. So that would be something that Susan and I would have to, you know, incorporate into a C I P if, if you wished for, for the future. Um, but this is just supplying you information right now and kind of seeing where we're at and what the issues are out there and why.
I mean, there, there's a couple of fields on here that, you know, I'm, I'm just thinking from a timing standpoint. He just really from, from, from playability.
Yes.
You know, I look at the Northside baseball and the Hidden Valley soccer. I mean, I think, I mean, is that a fair assessment?
That's a fair two right now.
The poor, fair to poor.
So would we? My question is, are we going to have enough time to get those fields playable for the upcoming season?
Well, I, I think we have until, uh, you know, probably September, we would have to make a decision. I do have a price on. Because we've been working on the Hidden Valley one for about two months. We're in Northside when I've been working on about three weeks. But, but I do have a price of about forty to fifty thousand dollars to, to redo the soccer field at Hidden Valley. And make it playable for the spring. And that would be with a heavy, heavy Bermuda spring, okay? Um, the, the cool grass, um, I just, I, I don't know if we'd be ready in the spring by now.
Tough, wouldn't it?
Yeah, it'd be very tough. Uh, unless you sodded it, unless it was a sod. And then your pricing would probably be equivalent to the Bermuda spring.
And, and as far as the Northside baseball.
I don't have a pricing.
I understand that, but what's our, what's our, what's our backup to infield turf? Cause I mean, I think that's going to be tough to turn around.
Well, the scope of work for that field to be playable, I think we're looking at, um, you're looking at bringing in a laser grader. And, and, and actually regrading that field almost completely. You have about, Mr. Linden, what was it? About seven or eight foot drop from center field to home plate? So, which is beyond, and, and so all that water's running down through the infield, washed it out over the years. That's what's created the, the, um. The, the, um, drop off from infield to outfield, things like that. Plus it's created ponding areas in, inside the field that where water doesn't have room to escape. None of these softball or baseball fields should be noted, have drainage systems in them. You know, so it, water just sheet flows across these fields until it gets to the sideline somewhere and either it gets out or it doesn't right now, you know? They've been there for, a lot of these been there for thirty, forty years. So, so a lot of stuff has degraded or eroded over time. And, and those channels may be closed up or not there anymore.
In, in my opinion, and all our campuses, we've got, I mean, most of our campuses are forty, fifty plus years old. And we've done a really nice job with the buildings and the school itself, but we have not done a nice job with. Say for instance, the stadium at, at Northside or the stadium at Bird. And that's a fifty-year-old antiquated stadium. I think I would be more than happy for Northside to be the guinea pig baseball field to see how that turns out if we could come up with. Those money from, from.
The football stadium at Northside's in much better shape than the football stadium at Hidden Valley though. No, I appreciate this information. As I recall, I mean, you know, I've kind of asked Chris to put this together. Cause yeah, I want it for, you know, excuse the pun, I want us, our high school, you know, at least we can start the high schools. I want there to be an even playing field. Right, I mean, um, uh, so, uh, so thank you and now the cost.
How much is currently left in the, in the C I P from, did we have leftover? Uh, obviously we've just started a new year.
Gotcha.
We have a lot of COVID funds.
Yes, yeah.
Jason, you asked a question. Let me ask it again. Do you have just a ballpark figure for what, you talked about the work that had to be done at Northside? If it's not the turf, but do you have a ballpark?
I, I, I do not. And I, I, I could estimate, but right now, the way the market is, I, I, I hate to even estimate without actually having a contractor give me that number. And which I'm expecting this week, actually.
Honestly, if you think about doing the Northside field, I mean. And I think we're having good results with the, uh, football fields. I'm not sure it doesn't make sense to go ahead and look at the baseball. You know, if you're going to do that Northside piece, to do the infield out of turf and possibly look at all of the schools.
I just can't imagine a seven-foot drop. That just doesn't even.
It's about, that's about a little bit over a two percent grade from center field to home plate.
I just can't imagine.
My son played there twenty, uh, sixteen years ago and it, that draw, it's crazy.
My only guess is that when, when that field was built, that they, instead of crowning it in the middle and have the water sheet flow left or right and trying to keep it somewhat level. They started high in the outfield and just let all the water flow down towards home plate. That, that seems the way that, that was laid out and designed. And, and that's, that's not the way you would do it now. I mean, what you would do now is grade it almost flat and then have a drainage system put in it. Much like the, the, the practice fields over there. I mean, that drainage system's unbelievable.
I think we're also a little bit afraid to ask for this stuff because we're looking at Burton and trying to get these schools pushed up. But we can't ignore the recreational aspects or, or the schools.
With the athletics, I mean, athletics, I mean, you know, play a huge part in, 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 I mean, student athletes, I mean, that's what, what.
You know, if Jason feels that strongly about it, he's supported me before and we need forty or fifty thousand for that soccer field. I think we do it. Like, you know, it's, it's a need. It needs to be done. And on the flip side of that, I think if we think these baseball field. I know ours, we've talked, I've already shown you. And if they hadn't had that John Deere, we kid about that John Deere and eight thousand dollars. They wouldn't have played the last week of the season. That, there was no way they could get that field ready. I think a lot of those baseball fields are in that shape. Maybe softball too. I don't know. Um, you know, the softball we took care of, I think at Bird. So I don't know about the others, but the point is, is if we feel that strongly about it. And I think turf with a minimal amount of, uh, you know, maintenance that we have to do to it. Uh, certainly, uh, to me is, is, if it's, it's not, if it's not an offset. It's minimal one way or the other. So you're going to pay for it now, but you're not going to pay for a long time. You know, to do anything to it. And so I'd like us to consider, again, I'm, I'm good with the Hidden Valley thing. I'd like us to consider the, uh, asking Chris to, to look at the baseball fields and as, as, as long as nobody's objecting to that. Get us a price to see what that, that would cost.
I think if, if, for the schools that want turf and baseball, you know, I think we also need to be mindful of. Um, of our sisters on the other side of softball too. I mean, you know, I'm gonna be hard pressed to support turf at a baseball stadium. When the softball team wants it as well. I mean, quite honestly, um, I mean, that's how we got into all this discussion to begin with. Kind of making it, you know, equitable for, for all the high schools. Um, and, and not to throw a wrench in, I'd mentioned it last time. If you could, you know, if you could also do some research, Chris, maybe get with Coach King and John Michael out at, uh, out at Hidden Valley High School. Once again, Hidden Valley's the only high school that can accommodate, um, pole vault. Uh, you know, they have to take the kids over to K Spring to do that. And they also, their runway for the. Long jump and the triple jump, you know, I can't remember, Coach King said it was about somewhere between fifteen, fifteen and thirty feet shorter than other high schools. So.
I'm actually working with a company to get pricing on those for you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
And, and I think whatever we need equipment to go along with maintaining these, I think that ought to be figured into whatever we need.
We've always included that as part of the budget. Uh, for instance, the pole vaults, when we done those at the other schools, the, the padding, it's about twenty-five thousand dollars.
I mean, if you, if they're going to maintain different fields and things and sales and whatever you need equipment to maintain those.
Can, I mean, do we all, are we all, I feel like we're all on the same page here when it comes to, and, and if, if we're not, please, you know. Please let me know, but you know, we started this by, we're pushing a lot of these costs to our, you know, high schools. When, you know, when I think we as a board believe that, you know, we should, you know, we, we need to burden the, 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 the cost for maintaining these athletic. Facilities. Now if there's a coach out there, I mean, we've seen it, you know, for some of these baseball coaches. I mean, look, if, 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 if they're. You know, determined to do the mowing, so be it, you know, but let's make sure they've got the equipment that they can, you know, um.
That's it.
Maintain those fields. Um, yes.
Um, I know that, uh, when they put the tracks in. That, and the high jump and the pole vault and that type of thing. They bought, uh, new, um, landing mats. But I noticed the other day that those landing mats are still out in the open, exposed to, uh, the weather. Should they not be stored somewhere out of the weather?
I would.
I'm just thinking, you know, the weather wears on those things and it aren't.
What's, and, and how do you, I mean?
They do have exterior covers, tarps to cover them. And so, so that, that, that's part of the package when we purchase them. And so that.
Do we even have a place to store? Those things are pretty big for one. And is that something that, I mean, do you need a machine to move those?
No, uh, you, people can move them. I think Bird stores theirs under their stadium. Uh, they have, they have a spot under the stadium.
Those, those things aren't cheap.
That's, that's right.
Well, not only are they not cheap, but you know, they deteriorate, they're not safe. I mean, the whole point of having a foam pad there is to break the fall, you know, the weather and the, uh, sun and everything else works on. It, it crushes, you know, deteriorates and then you're out buying new mats. I'm just, I'm just thinking, you know, I don't have any problem with, you know, upgrading and doing these things, but with upgrading.
Care of it.
You know, you, you have to look at the maintenance for the things that you're providing too. I mean, it's nice to buy a new mower. Where are you going to store it? It's nice to buy, you know, this, that or the other, where are you going to store it? Cause you can't leave it out. Vandalism and weathering and all that other kind of stuff. Doesn't work.
Chris, what was your estimate on maintaining a baseball field from as far as the cost sample?
Twenty thousand dollars a year. And that, that was for the, the cool weather grass of just, uh, aerating it, mowing it, um, and, and fertilizing it. And top dressing it.
And at the moment, we're, I mean, coaches get paid three thousand dollars a year to coach that team and maintain that field.
Yeah.
So.
It says a lot about our coaches too, that it still wants to, you know, even if we're offering to take care of it for them, they still want to do it. I mean, they're still putting their heart and soul and their time into it as well. I mean, some of that could be a control thing. Um.
And if for the right reasons, you wouldn't do it otherwise.
But Tammy said they were having trouble finding a coach over there.
That, that's what I was told this morning, yes, sir.
Coach Wade.
At Bird.
At Bird. I mean, I know the coach at Northside, I mean, he spends a lot of time on that baseball.
And to that point, Doug Pence stepped down June thirtieth, right? He's still mowing over there. Because he, and to your point, he doesn't want to leave it in bad shape for the next guy. And they can't drag the field. They're not going to go out there and hand rake the field. They don't have a tractor for eight thousand dollars. So, you know, it's, uh, those are, those are things like, say, I mean, these, these guys are, and he's not even getting paid. He's just doing it because, you know.
Well, that, 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 the cost of, you know, for us to maintain a field as we should, you know, over a ten-year period. You know, starts to approximate, you know, what the front cost of, you know, for the turf.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah, it's a whole, you know, we found out with the football that, you know, I think we, I can't remember, was it a fifty thousand dollar? A year, forty, fifty thousand dollars a year to maintain that field like at Northside. Not, I'm not sure if it is now with the Bermuda. But, you know, with the cool grass that we had. And so now we're putting back forty or fifty for these fields that are turf. And they don't have to maintain them. So, and, and we're stretched and we stretched K Spring, right? And, and we stretched that to what, twelve or fourteen years?
Thirteen seasons.
Yeah, so, so they said it was only ten. We got twelve. So we're, you know, I just, I'm not sure turf's not a good idea.
And we had put money aside like we are for the other days, when they need replacing.
Yes.
So Chris, let's, uh, thank you. I mean, I know this, this is taking a lot of time and, you know, and you've been out there and, you know, dealing with principals and. Uh, so thank you so much. What, what, what is our next step as far as a point of discussion? I mean, it feels to me like we need to, you know, get some more firm estimates on some of these, maybe do some cost comparisons.
Yes, sir.
When we talk about turf, you know, this is the upfront cost, but this is what we're going to say in maintenance. I mean, we are talking about potentially spending taxpayer dollars. So I think we, you know, it would, you know, for the good of the community, I think it'd be important to put those, you know, to get those numbers out there. To, you know, to see what our return on the investment of a larger upfront cost would be.
Sure. And, and, and we're already doing that in, in, in the suite. So I, I think by the, by the September work session, I, I, I'd be, feel more than comfortable to come back with you. The summary on, on these costs. Um, uh, also the cost of, of being able to, uh, renovate the, the Northside field, for instance. Or the, or the Bird field with, without turf. I can give you those. I should be able to have those costs by that time as well. Uh, I can give you realistic turf costs for softball and for baseball, uh, to make sure that they're tight and right. So yeah, I, I feel comfortable having, giving you, be able to give you that summary in September work session. Yes, sir.
Okay.
You want some good news on, on athletics?
Did we get a grant?
Tennis courts, uh, Northside should be starting within the next two or three weeks. Uh, they're actually going, he's probably going to be out there week after next and start demoing the fence and the lights. Uh, and then he's going to be also at the same time working, uh, at, at Glenver, getting those courts redone, which Corey didn't even know about it. So she was till to death when I talked to her about it. When she started telling me, Chris, we gotta do something with our tennis courts. I said, well, Corey, they should got there within a couple of weeks. And she thought, wow, you're like a miracle worker. Like this has been in plans for about two years.
Quick, you work quick.
Took me two year, years to get there, but they're also going to be hitting the Bird court. So we'll have all five.
Be done by spring.
Yes, the, the workshop will all be done before the end of October.
Okay, nice.
So the, 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 the goal is to have it done before the cold weather gets here. So all, yeah, so all five tennis courts, so all five high schools, I should say, will have LED lights, new tennis, you know, renovate tennis court. It'll look really good. We'll, we'll be good to go.
Someone mentioned, and it's worth mentioning again, you know, that when we start doing these fields, we need to be gender equity. Equitable as well because Title IX will hang you up. Even if boosters clubs do the improvements. And there's a significant difference between the male and female, that's a Title IX violation. You know, the school, uh, division will have to step in. Or somebody will have to step in, you know, and, and equalize that. So, you know, as we're, as we're thinking about this, we need to be thinking. You know, as we develop a master plan to include both, because it's, it's going to happen. It's just a matter of, do we do it voluntarily? Or does somebody call us on it? Well, then we end up doing it.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think that's going to be a problem, to be honest with you. I think, but it's definitely a great point. So, alright. I know we still have a decent amount to cover, so let's.
You don't have it. It wasn't attached to the board document.
Alright. Let's jump on, let's jump into, uh, the next item for discussion, preliminary Burton site discussion.
Okay, so a lot of. Okay, so a lot of this is, um, we'll have to discuss in closed session, um, because.
We do have some, you know, for the, for the good of the public, we do have a couple of sites that, uh, are, uh, either on currently on the market or potentially could be on the market, so, um, we'll discuss the, uh, um, some properties that we currently own, and then we will be moving into closed session to discuss the rest, so.
And Mr. Chairman, just as a reminder, uh, before we go into closed, it's not on the agenda, but, uh, you know, Chris will give a quick update just on where we are with the Bird project.
Sure, sure, I, I'll do that before I get into this then.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So, um, Roanoke County Schools has pretty much done their part, we're, we're, I mean, our electrical, they're, they're getting a little dinged here and there by the county inspectors, but nothing too major, um, um, they're, they're cleaning up some, some mistakes and stuff like that, so they're looking to have their, their, uh, final inspection. Uh, they've had, uh, one, two inspections, they'll probably get the third one and final one on Thursday or Friday, so we're good to go. Um, Avis has done their job, ramps and everything are up on the trailers, uh, we're good to go there. So the only thing that is kind of hanging into balance is whether we have power in those trailers from AEP by next week. So, I drove to Char- to Charleston, West Virginia on Friday last week to hand deliver a forty thousand dollar check to AEP to ensure that it was on the books, so there was no delays in them arriving this week. Poles were delivered yesterday, fortunately, uh, today they're installing poles, and all the poles should have been done before this meeting started or during, after that meeting. So, once the poles are installed, um, tomorrow they'll be hanging transformers, there's three of them, and then they'll be pulling the line to those transformers. So if all goes well, we could have po- uh, power at the trailers by tomorrow's Wednesday, Thursday morning. Alright, best case scenario. I'm being a little bit more realistic and saying Friday, just because I know how things are going right now with AEP. So, um, there, there's a little bit of a struggle there with AEP on this, and it's just, it's a staffing issue that they've had. Um, the multiple people had that worked on that, on our project for them this summer have left. So the project, you know, has had a couple of different project managers, and so they really pushing now to help us out and get in these trailers, bu- I'm sorry, cottages before school starts. So, the situation is, if we have power on, uh, Friday, we'll call for a final inspection, uh, on Monday. Um, IES has to do a little bit of fire alarm work after they get the power, so we'll be able to call for a final inspection on Monday, we're moving the furniture in Friday. And so with the final inspection Monday, teachers will be able to start setting, or start occupying the, their, their, their spaces on Monday. And so they'll be in the rooms for a couple of days before the kids get there to be able to set up their things and things like that. And we'll also assist them any way we can with the warehouse folks and our custodians, uh, both Glimber and, uh, Williamburg are, are chipping in, helping out. So, yeah, if everything, knock on wood, goes great, we're, 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 we're in good shape.
What happens if the electric is not ready?
Well, that's, that's a great question. I, I think you have, we have two options, and, and, and that, those, those options would have to be made before we move furniture into the trailers on Friday. So option one would be move that furniture back into the classrooms where they were coming from, and then move it back to, to the cottages in three to four days after that. Or possibly, um, have the Bird students come back on Monday instead of Thursday or Friday, that's, that's another option. So, those, those two would be the worst case scenarios, and I, to me, I, in my opinion, just because of the staffing of moving furniture twice like that, that would be the worst case scenario, getting kids into classrooms and three days later having to move them back out.
So if the, if the mask thing doesn't get me this, well.
Well, it's like I, 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 I've told Tammy, uh, I, I tell it to her all the time, you, on these construction jobs, especially when you're at the mercy of others, you roll with the punches and you just, you just try to laugh it off and do the best you can.
That's all you can do.
The kids are great, they're very adaptable, teachers are very adaptable, sometimes the parents are.
Kids wouldn't be upset about delaying the start of school.
We did the same thing at Cave Spring, didn't we?
Four, we did four days at Cave Spring in the, in the spring semester.
They'll be fine.
But obviously we'd like to avoid that.
We wanna avoid that, so we're, we're, we're positive, we're thinking positive.
I didn't know if we still have room where we, we really haven't started any renovations, so I figured.
Yeah, they just started the restrooms on the back of the building this week, but I would not allow them into classrooms until I had power into the cottages. It just, it, it, if I let them go full force and start tearing those classrooms up, and we didn't get power until September, we'd be in some serious trouble.
Is that, is that our issue, the power, or is that?
No, AEP's had the work order since the last week.
No, I get AEP, but I mean, it's, and I, when I say.
Yes, it's our responsibility as the owner, yeah, it, it sure is.
Not, uh, Avis, yeah.
No, no, their, their responsibility was the trailers and, uh, cottages and decks, and, and then our responsibility is the power, the fire alarm, and the intercoms.
Gotcha.
Are they not on site if they don't get, if we have to get back in school, have the students come back? They're not on site doing power while they're there, do they?
Well, all they'd be doing i- is, they would be at the back of the cottage court and, uh, I think my battery died. They'd be back at the, the backside of the, um, the cottages, back towards Williamburg, middle of that parking lot, doing their work back there. So they wouldn't be inside the fenced area, so to speak, and they would just be back there where the buses, uh, typically stage. The, the, that's where the power's running. The power's running from the stadium all the way to the ba- the backside of that, of that parking lot between the middle school and the high school, yes sir.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, my laptop just died, so I don't have the poke stuff.
What are you, an adapter?
Oh, we've got one of those.
I got one.
Well, I could, could do this, I have these, I did, we just don't want these to get out.
There you go.
I got one, thank you.
So we're only gonna talk about one of, of the properties, um, everything else we need to do in closed session.
Get all the power source there.
So you can find, uh, property number three in this report? Yeah. Yeah. Please, I need to have one for myself. Sorry about that. Rhonda took so long. We can actually talk about this, uh. Without going into that.
Let me ask a quick question.
Yes, sir.
And all, and, and this has got nothing to do with this, couldn't these directors go, if, I mean, is there any reason to keep them?
Oh, absolutely, so thank you, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I mean.
Unless you just want to.
Yeah, y'all stick around if you want to. This is good for you, right? So you wanna die? We gotta have you, Jeff. Jeff.
Okay, so we're gonna go to page twenty-two, oh, Jason, okay.
There, Jason's here.
Oh, the other Jason. Um, Mr. Moretz, yeah, so, uh, when he gets back, we're gonna go to page twenty-two, and the only one we're gonna talk about in open session is Poke Farm, okay?
You don't wanna split it through?
Say again?
You can flip through, just don't mention anything else.
Don't mention anything else, yeah, that's right.
These mics are very sensitive.
So, you want me to go ahead and begin, or you want me to wait for him?
You can go first.
Oh, here he is, okay. Mr. Moretz, we're on page, we're starting on page twenty-two, property three, Poke Farm, that's the only one we're gonna talk about in open session.
Okay.
Alright, so basically what we have here is, we have a couple of different properties that come together, it's considered Poke Farm. Um, it's developable, the, what Ballzer has put together so far is they're, uh, looking at the feasibility for each of these sites that we're looking at, and, and constructability, and they're actually going to develop cost for civil cost, a- as we select some properties to look at. So, right now, they've just done an evaluation of about, um, three properties, and they have five more that they're looking at, okay? That they don't have reports on yet, but we're gonna talk about those properties because we probably just need to go ahead and eliminate two or three of them right off the bat, based off some information we have. So anyway, Poke Farm, sorry, twenty, about twenty-two acres of it is developable. So it's right on the fringe from what we just talked about, about Ben's presentation on twenty-one acres, needing, needing, needing to be for that. Now here are some things that we have found out about Poke Farm, is there obviously is no water there, and there is no sewer there. We do have a cost, uh, Mr. Kaywood and I talked to Mr. McAvoy from the Water Authority, and we're looking at two point six million dollars just to get water there and to pump sewer from there. Now, there may be about six hundred thousand dollars available from the Water Authority to help offset some of those costs, but if you're looking at costs, we're looking at two point six million dollars, and that's just to get the water and sewer to that property, okay?
And how much did the authority have?
Six hundred thousand. And that, that's money they do not have yet, but it's money they have earmarked next year and the year after to have six hundred thousand by twenty twenty-five in their budget.
Yeah, but that's not just for one project.
No, that's for that project, that, that's for running the water and sewer down to Poke Farm.
So it'd be two million instead of two six.
Correct, correct. And, you, you, we don't know, if we were to go with Poke Farm, they may alter their plan, um, their six-year plan and put more resources to that, because if they run it that far, that.
It's gonna open it up for a lot of other citizens up there.
Exactly, it's gonna open up a lot of development in that area.
Going up by a lot of places to get to Poke Farm, that's a long way.
Absolutely.
Is that just the cost of running the utilities there, or does that include hookup fees?
That, that, that would, well, I believe that's just running the utilities there, but I think the, the hookup fees for something like that, we're probably talking about a hundred thousand dollars each, so two point six, two point seven million dollars.
So the closest is Cotton Hill?
Yes, but it's not at the Cotton Hill intersection on two twenty-one, it is back up Cotton Hill into, into the neighborhood.
So you gotta come from up there?
Yes, they would have to go all the way up into that neighborhood because that, that's where the twelve inch la- la- uh, main that they would have to hit. Uh, there's only a six inch down at the intersection on two twenty-one. So they, they would have to, they would have to get up in, into the intersection, and they would probably run it right down the middle of the road, all the way down to Poke or into the easement on the right-hand side of the road.
And their plans to cross the creek?
I imagine, I, I imagine there is, uh, there, there, cause you do cross that, yeah, yeah, so I'm imagining that, that, that there is a plan to do that as part of that. Uh, they, they, they let us know that they would love to get it all the way down to Back Creek, you know, they, they would like to get, get it down to the bottom of the mountain, but there's, there's nowhere in their funding right now. So, that, that, that is right upfront cost. Um, what Ballzer has determined is that, um, basically, it, there would be significant amount of grading needed on this site to create a pad for, uh, one of our designs for.
To get out of the flood plain?
No, just because the entire hillside is, is a hundred foot, uh, elevation from the bottom of the developable area to the top of the developable area.
Cause on the left side going out is floodway, flood plain?
Yes, yes, that area on the opposite side of the road is not developable, because it's all flood, flood, that, that's not, yes sir.
With Poke Valley Road running right through the middle of this property, it, I mean, would either of those two footprints that you showed us fit on this? Or would you have to have this, like a separate campus for one, or, or separate buildings?
Maybe, um, there's, I would, I would have to go back and look to see how much acreage is on the left side of Poke Farm. Uh, it's, it's basically the house and then another facility, so I, I think it's just like two or three acres over there, but again.
So you'd have to separate.
Well, yeah, if, if we need twenty-one acres, then, then this property's probably not going to do it. So they're gonna rate it, but, but.
It shows one is thirteen and one is seven and a half.
On the left side of the road? I think thirteen's on the right side of the road.
Thirteen on the right-hand side, correct, and then seven and a half on the left-hand side.
And, and then the house, which is still an acre and a half, I think, which is also on the left. So, what they're doing is, this, this is basic information they're providing us so that we can, we can keep moving forward. Um, but they're gonna come up with a, a rating scale, uh, uh, on the, the cost of civil work, um, the ability of that acreage to be able to match what footprint we provide them. Um, they're also going to evaluate, uh, we have, we've given them a, a litany of, uh, things that they use for a scoring system. It's about thirteen or fourteen items, uh, including distances from schools and things like that to make it more central. They have not established that yet because they also wanted to know some of these other properties that we want them to look at. And so, and, and we'll, we'll look at those in closed session and, and let them know what other properties to evaluate, and then they can perform their, their rating, their ranking scale and provide the information to us. But on the surface, Poke Farm looks like a, a, not a very feasible, uh, uh, situation with the amount of civil work, the amount of acres available that's developable, and the cost of running utilities to, to the site.
So just a ballpark, besides the two point six or two million?
Oh, for, for civil work?
Yeah.
I, I, I don't have a ballpark on it, no, not yet, yes sir.
The asking price is, is, uh, we own that property.
We own that property, that's just a tax assessment on that property.
Yeah, so we, speaking of that, we got thirteen acres here at a value of two hundred and eighty-eight thousand assessed. And, uh, would we pay three million?
Over two million for that property.
That was a great buy.
Well.
Why is everybody looking at Mr. Moretz?
We'd like to sell it.
Yeah, I, I'd do it for the, maybe twenty-six, but no.
Well, something to think about, if the Water Authority was to, to just, you know, up and go ahead and run water and sewer down to that area, that value, that property, that value, the, the value of that property will skyrocket when, when that happens.
But they're not gonna up and do that.
Well, right now it is on their six-year plan for them to do that in twenty twenty-five.
It is.
Yes.
It's their cost.
Well, they're, right now they have six hundred thousand earmarked, obviously they gotta come up with another two billion. But I, I, I think a lot of that is gonna be driven by Roanoke County and how they, they're doing a coun- a comprehensive plan now, which they haven't done one since two thousand and five. And, and as they're doing their comprehensive plan, it really is gonna depend on what they designate that area, how they want that area to be developed over the next ten years. So they may say they want a high-end residential and then work something out with the Water Authority and, and get water and sewer down there so that they, they, there's a housing shortage, obviously, in Roanoke, so that would be a prime area to get water and sewer down and develop those, those properties instead of one acre, three acre lots, two quarter acre, half acre lots. That's just my planning days coming out, kinda coming out of me. So we, there's some other properties we'll talk about in closed session.
Okay, alright. Do you wanna read us into, and I'll just, we're going into closed session just for information. Um, yeah, there's not gonna be any action from closed session, um, so I think the live streaming and recording of the meeting will, uh, uh, will stop once we head into closed.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm with the Roanoke County School Board convening in closed session for the following, to discuss the acquisition of real property for a public purpose where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the school board pursuant to the real property exemption at two dot two dash three seven one one A three of the Code of Virginia.
My name's Kirk.
Mr. Weller?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.